I call this meeting to the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Before we go to certification of closed session, I just wanted to thank staff for the new microphone situation. Not only do these microphones pick our voices up so we can hear each other, but the gallery should be able to hear a little bit better now. So, that's great. Thank you very much. So, that moves into item 2.02, certification of closed session. May I have a motion, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in the Virginia law, and that only such public matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Thurzer, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Now, I'd like to call the public hearing on fiscal year 2018 operating budget open. Dr. Beers, would you like to read the move?
Yes. This is a time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board concerning the FY 18 WJCC proposed budget. Speakers are asked to come to the podium with their, when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making references to specific individuals. The Board is interested in hearing all comments fully, and request that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the Board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening and appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Taylor?
All right, my apologies for any names that I don't get right. Feel free to correct me. Corey Buttram?
Hi, good evening. My name is Corey Buttram. I'm here as a member of the village and also as a parent of a seventh grader who attends Berkeley Middle School. My seventh grader went to James River Elementary School for her elementary career, and so I'm very familiar with the IB program. I have a soft spot for the IB program, James River, and the teachers who are at that school. However, I would like the Board to begin to take a closer look at the costs and benefits of that program at James River. As you know, the program has been in effect for about 10 years, and in those 10 years, our district has spent over a million dollars in professional development funds and certification for that program. And the, as far as I know and can tell, we have not allocated funds for the assessment of that program or to follow school, or follow students after they have left the program and to kind of track their progress. That's a long time to put resources into a program without actually assessing it. So, I would ask that you take a look at that program a little bit more closely. I just wanted to highlight some facts about James River. They have over 63% free and reduced lunch. That rate exceeds all of the other elementary schools in the district. I know you guys are probably familiar with these facts, but they just have really started to resonate with me a little bit. English is a second language according to a report that I found from 2013. English is a second language for over 40% of the students at James River, and 11% of the students at James River are not English language proficient. However, we teach English as a second language to students for whom it is probably already well-known to them in the IB program. And the overall SOL pass rate for James River is 74%, which is nine points lower than the other, the district average. And as you can guess, it's far lower for students who are considered to be at risk. So, I really want the Board to take a look at, and we as the village would like the Board to take a look at, the program to determine if it's effective. I believe if it's not shown to be effective, that the Board has a fiduciary and an ethical responsibility to come up and fund programs for students that target a specific population, specific population that is at James River and their specific needs. So, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Madeline Vanu?
Hi, I'm Madeline Van. I had come today just to applaud you all for extending some more full-time equivalencies for special education. I'm not sure that we're fully where we need to be in terms of special education throughout the district. Particularly concerned about our math proficiency for special education students, and I would like that to be a priority. I have a child who's at James River, and he's in special education, and this is, we pay for outside tutoring for math, not a statement about James River at all, but I do think that we need perhaps to reach out for best practices in math education for special needs children to try to achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve. And I also wanted to say, he turned 10, he went through Bright Beginnings. It was a wonderful program, and I hope that you all can continue to fund and expand the Bright Beginnings program because that's probably one of the best investments that we make. Thank you.
Beth Haw?
Good evening. I wasn't really prepared for this, so I jotted down some notes, so hopefully I can pull this off. As you are looking at the budget, I don't know if you're aware, but some things are coming down the road that we need to maybe be concerned about or at least thinking about how we address things in the future. There's an unidentified group of students that are falling behind in reading. These students have dyslexia. This neurological difference affects one out of five to one out of seven people worldwide. Teachers will be trained to identify these students coming up in the 2018 school year. There is, will be a program that they will all have to, I think, take online, which will make the identification for these students earlier. So, as you're looking at your budget, we need to really address the programs that we're going to be offering to these students that are specifically gauged towards students with dyslexia. There are some reading programs that do a better job than just the standard reading-type programs. So, I would like this to be something that we look forward instead of, I'd like to see us be more proactive at addressing this and possibly looking at how there's other school systems that have already been addressing it, not waiting for these students to fail, which is what happens. And because they're bright kids, they typically get left behind. And then, and there's three students right now that I know of that are 17 years old and are struggling in school because they did not get adequate help, and their reading is poor. So, it's a, it's not a new problem, it's an old problem, and it needs, it needs your support. Thank you.
Kimberly Hunley?
Good evening. Kimberly Hunley, President of the Williamsburg Education Association. I come tonight with gloves off. I know Kira wants me to bring my gloves. I think the only thing that would make me bring those gloves out is if you increase class size.[587.72][587.72](Laughter) I have 21 little cherubs in. If I had 30, woo! Anyway, that would push me into really early retirement. But definitely, we're in a fight for public education, and you're going to hear lots of citizens, and you'll probably get emails from people saying what, you know, you should cut this, or you shouldn't cut this, or keep this. And my only suggestion would be just to see where that person stands in this war, because there are a lot of people that are in a battle, but they're not in the war. And we are, the teachers, the staff, bus drivers, cafeteria, we are in the trenches. We are on the front lines. We are not reporting what we see. We're living it every day. And we need, not we want, a lot of people say, well, teachers want a raise, teachers want, we don't want it, we need it. We deserve it. We worked for it. We are doing the best that we can do. We're not even fully armored sometimes. We have to make up our own battle plans, but we do that because we are here to protect and serve the children, all the children. And so, we would like to see programs that can be possibly postponed. The funds for those, definitely, you know, postpone them. Also, we don't want any teachers or staff to lose money. That's definitely, so our priorities are, you know, an increase to be compensated for what we love and what we do, and also to not have any staff members lose what they're already accustomed to. We are lovers of this education. We're not fighters. And I think a lot of people, you know, I'm a lover, I'm not a fighter, I don't want to put on the gloves, you know, I just, and I know that this is a very hard thing that you all have to do. And I do appreciate, and we, I keep saying aye, but I'm speaking for all the teachers, we do appreciate all the work that you've put forth, and it's not easy. But if you looked at the papers, Arlington Teachers or Alexandria, 300 teachers, they had to close the schools tomorrow because 300 teachers took the day off, called in sick for what would it be like, women not in the workplace tomorrow. So, tomorrow, and we didn't do that. I mean, as teachers, we work really hard. Not once have we surrendered or retreated. We keep moving forward because we want the victory. And to my knowledge, as President this year, I can think of five teachers that went AWOL, less than that, really, less, that walked off the job, didn't come back, did not return to the battlefield. We're not for that. We're for victory for everyone. We want a win-win all the way around. And we appreciate it, and if there's anything we can do before that time to help you all out, you know where we are, please call us, and good luck. Thanks.
Thank you very much. There are no more speaker cards for the public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing. That brings us to item, oh, sorry. Your time is up, Ms. Hunley.[789.38][789.38](Laughter) That brings us to 4.01, the roll. Ms. Thurzer, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here. And I'd like to note that Ms. Hummel could not join us today because she is traveling, but she is here in spirit. Item 4.02, the approval of the agenda. Mrs. Young, may I have a motion, please?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the following amendment, that we switch the positions of 8.01 and 8.02. 8.01 being the operating budget discussion, which would follow equity through engagement.
Have a second, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Thurzer, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ombi?
Here. Yes. Sorry.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Agenda's been approved, and that brings us to 5.01, announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Heron, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, WJCC schools celebrated Read Across America Day. Throughout the division, students and staff dressed up as their favorite Dr. Seuss characters, and community members, school board members, and central office employees and staff read to students in the schools. This nationwide celebration takes place every year, honoring Dr. Seuss's birthday by promoting literacy in a fun way for all. The Virginia Symphony Orchestra musicians recently mentored honors orchestra classes at each of WJCC's high schools in preparation for the all-district eight assessment. We thank them for their partnership with our schools and for sharing their knowledge and talents with our students. Elementary bridge club students participated in a regional youth tournament held at the Kings Mills Doubletree. This tournament allowed students the opportunity to compete against each other and their peers from other school systems. Bridge playing can develop and promote math, critical thinking, and teamwork skills. A special thanks to all of the volunteers who sponsor bridge clubs at our schools. Throughout, throughout March, all 11th and 12th grade students will be participating in a career fair at their home high school. Over 22 companies and organizations are participating in each of the three career fairs. The events will raise awareness about the importance of post-secondary education and training, connect students with different professions, and give community members a chance to share their expertise with students. Prior to each event, school counselors will work with students on career fair preparation, and during the event, students will have the opportunity to earn career cash from participating businesses for displaying career readiness skills such as communication, teamwork, cooperation, time management, planning and organization, initiative, and motivation. These are all of the announcements I have this evening, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Ms. Ombi, would you like to share anything?
Yes, I would like to give an update on the 21st Century and Career Readiness Advisory Committee, which I'm the liaison of. We met on February 28. Ms. DePaola and Ms. Parker have been doing a yeoman's job with the absence of the CTE coordinator. They have an opportunity in the next few months to re-envision the CTE coordinator at the central office level, and they hope to recruit someone who is a visionary, who's a good communicator, and is an advocate for career and technical education, and hopefully that position will be filled by this fall. Over the next few months and next few meetings, the CTE Advisory Committee will identify new leadership positions, the Chair, Vice Chair, as well as taking a look at their bylaws. They have achieved a lot this past year. As mentioned, the career fair is an opportunity for our juniors and some seniors. They have an, this coming fall, there will be some new career and technical programs at the middle school level, which is very exciting. So, seventh, sixth grade and seventh grade students will have an opportunity to explore college and career readiness. Students also had an opportunity to attend a career fair at New Horizons. I'm struggling to look at my notes here, and I'm sorry. One thing that they've done in the last year is to ensure that they have put systems in place to correct, to collect accurate data, and to ensure that that goes on to the, to the feds, to ensure that we're receiving the appropriate amount of Perkins monies, which go to support our programs. They have worked with, within our curriculum to ensure that students who receive a standard diploma starting this year are required to graduate with at least one credential. And so, that will happen, but, but that's not the only credential. So, there are systems put in place from moving forward where students will have an opportunity at the ninth grade level to earn an industry credential, as well as through English, and then as their junior and senior year, through their economics and personal finance class, and then with any career and technical class, they'll have an opportunity to earn a credential. So, our students will leave our school system with multiple credentials. Those with a standard diploma certainly is required by changes, but all of our students, even those with advanced studies diploma, will also have an opportunity to earn multiple credentials. And I'm just totally impressed with the work that the Advisory Committee has done, and I'm looking forward to learning more about career and technical education.
Do any other school board members have announcements? Okay. That brings us to 6.01, citizens' comments. Dr. Beers?
This is the, another time when it's citizens who have submitted, sorry, who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask you to refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The Board is always interested in hearing your comments, and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. And although the Board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening, and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines, and I am completed my directions again.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Taylor?
Judy Nisich?
Judy Nisich, I'm in transportation. Before I get underway, I want to say to Dr. Heron, we're just really thrilled you're our new superintendent. When we heard you had been offered the job, we were all excited, and we were honored when you said yes. We are prepared to help you in any way we can because our people serve, and we care, and we will assist you any way we can to achieve your goals for our school system. Now, that being said, young relax, I'm not here in an adversarial role this time. (Laughter) I'm here to thank you for the support we've had so far and the little progress we've made on the discipline issues within our schools and on our buses. We are, we're on the tip of the iceberg, I have to say that, but we're working on it. I've had a little problem wooing drivers away from the idea that it doesn't do any good to write the referral, nobody will do anything. And yes, I have to admit, there's some personality clashes between the disciplinarians and some of the drivers. Things like, oh, that wasn't so bad, or mercy, that driver writes way under too many referrals, or the run's only 10 minutes long, why don't they just suck it up and take the kids home? But I have to tell you, driving a school bus is a lot like being a parent. What bothers one just doesn't necessarily bother another. And if any action on a school bus distracts the driver, we are talking about the safety of everybody on there, and I got a flash for you. Nobody just wants to grow up to be a bus driver. It happens to us. But we're having schools who do not want the honor of having the most best suspensions, so they'll avoid us like the plague in some of our schools. But we are pleased to say that we have had some success. Got a ways to go, but we want to thank you for the support and for the continued observance of what's going on in our schools where discipline is concerned. You could help us out a lot just simply by enforcing the existing policy, EEACC, for all schools K through 12. And yes, I did say kindergarten through 12. It's just difficult if we do not get the children to understand that there are disciplinary rules and that there are consequences for their actions in primary school. Our problem is only going to compound further down the road. So, I want to thank you for what we've done so far, your support. We ask for it continuing on and looking into this matter as much as you can. And I really want to come, it's been a year since I first come here, and I want to come back to you long before that and say to you that that iceberg we were working on is now an ice cube. So, thank you again for your support, and we look forward to helping you, Dr. Heron, any way we can.
For all you do.
Claudio Palmas?
Good evening. My name's Claudio Palmas. I live in the Meadows subdivision. I have a son in eighth grade at Berkeley. It was refreshing to read the Gazette on Saturday that Dr. Herring's big, biggest priority is to make sure that every single student is engaged in learning in the classroom. My son fits the description she gave of, of the student that is high achieving and has a lot of support at home, who needs to be stretched even further to reach his fullest potential. However, due to the structure of the typical classroom, he's not getting the individualized instruction that need, that he needs, and he does not look high functioning on, on paper, and he is. I was very excited to see that the Pathways program being expanded to the other two high schools here in the county. This would allow my son, and son, a more innovative approach to learning. It was refreshing to read the description of the program. Flexible through online courses, blended instruction, dual enrollment project, and community-based learning. More specifically, we're looking at the Pathways project at Lafayette High School that will give opportunities to explore leadership and entrepreneurship, which, when I looked at the webpage yesterday, it said, "Coming in 2018, 2019." Now, this would, this would mean my son would not, would lose out on this, this opportunity to participate in this program totally, as he is beginning ninth grade in the fall. Now, having the program at Warhol only does not give equal opportunity across the board for all students. Only 100 out of 3,000 are given this wonderful opportunity. Tripling that option for a relatively small price tag, $200,000, seems very reasonable. Finding $200,000 does not seem out of reach in a multimillion-dollar budget, budget. I urge the school board to reconsider the delay of this program that my son would immensely benefit from. I do not want him to be one of those students that loses his love of learning because he's not being taught in the ways that he learns. Now, the traditional 90-minute block of instruction will certainly put my son and many other kids just like him on paths of disinterest. And this, of course, will have a long, life-lasting impact. Now, as a graduate of Lafayette High School, I had a positive learning experience there, and I want the same for my son. Again, I urge the school board to reconsider and fund the Pathways projects, and for all three high schools.
Thank you very much. Are there any more speaker cards? Okay. There are no more speaker cards, so that brings us to item 7.01, 2017-2018 school year calendar as a proposed agenda item for the next meeting. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you're aware, the Board had an opportunity to see the proposed calendar brought forward by the committee last time, and Ms. Overkamp Smith brought it to us. Since then, we've put out a opportunity for comment in the community, and Ms. Overkamp Smith's here to answer any questions you have this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Dr. Heron, we had 85 community and staff members provide us with comments on the draft calendar. It was up for close to three weeks. We sent out an email to all staff alerting them to the draft. We also posted the information and the links to social media and on our website. The bulk of the comments were relating to winter break. I'd say 90% of those comments said they wished we could have two weeks at winter break. There were also comments about conference nights, professional development, workdays, other holidays, including Arbor Day, and some, you know, wide-ranging comments that covered all of those issues. Are there any questions about the draft or the comments that we received? Any questions?
The only question I have as I'm looking at this is, I, I share that concern about teachers, especially, and students not having the two weeks, but I understand the constraints. But I notice on the 20th, Wednesday, it's an early release day. What does that exactly mean? I mean, the students come half a day, and then?
It's not quite half a day. The high schools are out, out 11, 11:30, and then it tears from that. So, it's not a half day, but it's, it's more than a half day, a little bit more than a half day.
Are teachers released at the end of, when the top, when students are released?
Typically, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Once the buses are home, typically, everybody is released. But the schools, once all the students are on board the buses, typically, they're released.
This, the calendar that we have here pretty much mimics what we had this year.
It does.
And I just think-
Almost exactly.
Yeah, I think consistency from year to year is, is pretty important to make sure that families can plan and understand, so, so I'm, I'll support this calendar. families can plan and understand, so I'll support this calendar.
More comments. I share Mr. Kelly's support of the documents, so we will put this on the next meeting for regular meeting in March for adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 8.02, Equity Through Engagement Empowering English Language Learners. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're delighted this evening to bring you yet another in our series on equity, and this this evening focuses on English language learners, and Dr. Pat Tillman is here to, as a coordinator of the program, to present some information to you this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Herron. It is my pleasure to share with you how W J C C is embracing our diversity and empowering our English language learners. When students with a mother tongue other than English enroll in our school division, they are afforded the opportunity to participate in the English as a Second Language, or ESL program. The goals of participation are to provide English learners with meaningful access to grade-level content through meaningful participation in all instructional environments. The Every Student Succeeds Act requires that we provide appropriate pathways to language proficiency for our English learners and that the program is based on sound educational theory. Serving English learners from 5 to 21 years of age, our L student population has grown significantly over the past several years. Our families speak 31 different languages, with Spanish being our primary language group, followed by Mandarin Chinese, Arabic, Russian, and Vietnamese.
I'm Emily, I'm from China.
Hi, my name is Fatima Jafar, and I am from Syria.
My name is Ah, I came from Russia.
Hello, my name is Super Shai, I'm from Thailand.
My name is Karina, and I'm from Romania.
Hi, my name is Beth, and I'm from Vietnam. Now, I'm a student at Lafayette High School.
My name is Beth. My name is Sutsia, and I come from Vietnam.
With educators as our foundation and student success as our focus, our ESL program is structured around these four key pillars, which serve as our framework. In our first pillar of building programmatic capacity, we work to ensure that our program is in compliance with state and federal mandates and is based on sound research. We are funded through a combination of local allocations and federal grant monies. A key requirement is that the core language program extend beyond the core content program. Annual assessments are used to determine student progress towards language proficiency. The second pillar is building instructional capacity to effectively meet the diverse needs of our students. It is imperative that we provide ongoing and targeted professional learning opportunities.
I attended training this past fall for my ELLs, and the one thing that I, well, a lot of things that I took away from it, I was very thankful for the course because it gave me insight where I did not have insight, and it also gave me ideas. So a couple of ideas that I came away with was teach the text backwards, start with the hands-on manipulative type work first, and then to hook them, and it really does work with all your students.
I've attended an Excel conference, and I learned a lot of great strategies there, such as the pass-around summary. I use that in all of my classes. I also attended, or was a member of, the Regent Cohort, getting my ELL endorsement, and I learned a lot of basic strategies of working with ELL kids, which I've translated to use with all my students in the classroom.
From site-based, job-embedded staff development to our graduate courses offered through our partnership with Regent University, we have an intense focus on providing high-quality, sustained professional learning opportunities to empower our teachers to confidently deliver targeted instruction. The third pillar is building academic and linguistic capacity. By implementing a variety of instructional strategies, significant benefits are yielded not only for our English learners, but for all of our students.
Just having ELLs in the classroom has- I'm now finding myself-
I've benefited from teaching English language learners because I put a much greater focus on vocabulary acquisition, and all of my students benefit from the, our English language learners because it broadens their global horizons in terms of culture and language and different life experiences and background knowledge.
The use of realia, or real objects, graphic organizers, manipulatives, sorts, and visual aids are critical to the language learning process.
One of the things that I use to help my ELLs understand what's going on in the content area is to use realia and pictures to just help with the vocabulary of the content lesson. And this doesn't just help the ELL students in the classroom, this helps everyone to understand what's going on in the classroom and in the content a little bit better.
So part of the place, trees, yeah, this is us.
Building relationships is an important part of student achievement. James Comer reminds us that children don't care what we know until they know that we care.
I spent a lot of time teaching overseas when I was younger, and I know how tough culture shock can be, and not speaking the language makes it much worse. I mean, learning the culture and learning the language can really go hand in hand.
One strategy that I think is really helpful to work with the ESL students is to get to know them and build a rapport. Many students have such diverse backgrounds, and by learning something about them, you can make better connections and help them understand the new material that you're bringing to the table.
As a part of our current initiatives, we have developed a newcomers academy to provide intensive language instruction to our older Ls at the high school level. We have also crafted a verified credit pathway to create a series of courses specifically designed with L needs in mind, providing equitable access to a standard or an advanced diploma. At present, we are planning for a pilot program at the middle school level. We continue to focus on collaborative strategies, large and small group sessions, and incorporating the language standards from WIDA, the World Class Instructional Design Association. The final pillar is building parental and family capacity. We endeavor to provide opportunities for our families to learn about and engage in our school communities. We also seek to be enriched by the cultural experiences of our wonderfully diverse families. We have developed an ESL Parent Resource Center to provide information and host workshops. We also work to translate important documents and provide interpretation services for parent meetings. Every year, all of our students who are classified as English learners participate in the Access for Ls assessment that measures each student's progress towards attaining English language proficiency in the reading, writing, listening, and speaking domains. The results of the assessment determines each student's level of language proficiency, starting with our newest students at Level 1, who have little to no English, ranging all the way to Level 5, representing our students with the highest levels of language proficiency. Students reaching Level 6 are considered fully proficient and are exited from the program, but are monitored for four years to ensure their success. For the past three years, we've had a steady increase in the percentage of students attaining English proficiency and exiting the program. However, not every student in the program reaches the level of proficiency in a given year. The scores of those students are analyzed to determine if they've made progress. Progress is defined as student growth of at least one language proficiency level from the previous year. Over the past three years, 71, 84, and 82% of our Ls respectively have met the criteria for having made progress. Excuse me. One of our measures of academic progress are the standards of learning assessments. For the past three years, the reading scores of our Ls have remained constant or improved. However, it should be noted that there is still a substantive gap between the scores of all students in W J C C and our English learners. Similarly, in math, we have also made notable gains in L performance exceeding the state standard for the past two years.
The most of the ESL program in our school division are the students themselves.
They share their cultures and communities that they come from with kids who may not ever get a chance to meet somebody that speaks a different language or from a different country.
I'm proud to speak English, and I like to speak English with my friends.
I like reading the most.
My favorite part about school is reading.
The ESL program is helping a lot to learn English.
They help us with math, language charts, and sometimes on recess time, if we have problems, we can go to the nurse.
Goodbye.
Thank you for affording me the opportunity to share with you this evening, and at this point, if there are any questions, I'd like to entertain them.
Sorry we had our backs to you the entire time we were engaged. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Tillman or Dr. Herron?
I have a question. I'm not quite, it's not quite clear to me, after looking at the PowerPoint, each PowerPoint presentation, if there is a kind of an ongoing systematic approach to the kind of instruction that these youngsters are getting. I'm thinking in terms of what other states have done, California, Texas, Arizona, which have enormous populations of ELL students. And so I, where everybody, I guess that's what I want to, I'm wanting to understand the nature either of the staff development or how this is working, you know, would it, because I, there are programs, they're not commercial programs, they're approaches. PSYOP is a really big one, and it's used in a number of states, and so I'm just curious if that has filtered in, any of that. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, we absolutely do use the PSYOP program here, and PSYOP is Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, and it is a very systematic approach to engaging our instructional staff and using language objectives and content objectives in both the ESL classroom and in the regular content classroom. We have had trainings here onsite with many of our staff members, and we will be having that training again over the series of the next several years so that we can expose as many staff members as possible to the sheltered instruction process. Also, with our Regent University partnership, one of the classes that the staff members, who are then students, participate in is a class that focuses on the eight-step process of the PSYOP model, the sheltered instruction model. So it's one that we are pursuing vehemently here in the division. Thank you.
I have one question. So what do you see are some of your biggest challenges to meet the needs of our growing population?
I think one of the things that we have to really focus on is empowering our staff members, because we've had such an increase in diverse student enrollment from a variety of language backgrounds. One of the key things is equipping teachers with tools and strategies to utilize in the classroom so that they aren't afraid to embrace and engage our ESL students as they do with all of our students. Helping teachers understand that good, solid instruction is what we do every day, and we can apply those same strategies with some modifications for our ESL students. But oftentimes, when we don't know what to do, it becomes a stumbling block for us. So as we work to empower educators, that will then translate into more gains for our students. It's a process because it's new for us all as we navigate the changes in our demographic population, not only here, but in our surrounding divisions and communities as well.
Thank you.
Our, you know, as you track over time, you can tell that our English language learners has definitely grown from 331 in 2011 and 12 to 657, and that requires us to add more teachers that specialize in that. But I think it can't be overlooked, the benefit that those students bring to our other students to, as far as diversity and understanding other people's perspective, and I think that's, I think that's a great statement for our community that, you know, that segment of our population is increasing. Still, we have an achievement gap that we have to continue to work on, and it's good that we're making progress, but, you know, we need to provide what we need to provide to help close that achievement gap and, you know, and get their proficiency to the rest of the student body, so. But thank you for the great presentation, that was really very informative. Thank you.
I'm just looking at the concentration of students at these schools. Is there a reason, there is, I mean, is it just because of housing that these students, so many of them end up at James River and Matthew Whaley?
Oftentimes, family groups move together, and once a family has become established, other family members move in similar areas, so it does become a housing preference that folks kind of cluster in certain areas.
I'd like to echo everyone's thanks for your presentation. This entire series, Dr. Herron, is very helpful in helping us understand the various ways that we as a division are endeavoring to meet every child where they are, give them the best education we possibly can. So thank you for your presentation and for your hard work.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
So that, we then move to 8.01, the fiscal year 2018 Operating Budget Discussion. Before we, I toss it over to Dr. Herron, I would like to say that as a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 18 school budget because I am an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Madam Chair, as a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2017-18 school budget because my wife is an employee of the W J C C schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you're aware, at the last board meeting, I presented the superintendent's proposed budget to the school board, and this evening, this is the Board's opportunity to discuss and amend and change the budget as presented. What I plan to do this evening is say very little, but certainly to give you a very quick reminder of some of the things we didn't include in the budget, some of the things that are non-negotiable, and some of the things that I have proposed as part of the budget of need for the school system. So if I could start just with the first slide of priorities that we didn't include, I just want to, I'm not going to go through individually as I did last time, but just to say, these are the things that are not there, there is an impact. To let the school board members have a look at them again, and if there's any that you would wish to include that we have not included in the budget, we would ask for your direction on these particular priorities. Okay, next one. These are the non-negotiable increases, which we brought to you last time. We went through and gave a lot of data showing the need for all of these things and the fact that most of them are driven by state code and by what we're expected to do by the Virginia Department of Education. So these are, haven't changed from last time. Then moving on quickly to, this is the actual cost of the non-negotiables that we've absolutely no control over. This is the percentage of the budget as presented last time. 62% is non-negotiable. And then you have this again already, but just for the benefit of the community and the public here tonight, these are the other increases that I requested last time as part of the superintendent's proposed budget. So all of those are still, then the next three slides are things that we feel are necessary and part of our budget of need as a school division. You did give some directions for pathways last time about delaying the program. I have not adjusted the budget numbers, I'll wait for your direction tonight to do that, along with any other amendments that you wish staff to make before bringing you a final budget that becomes the school board budget at this point in time. Again, we talked about all of these. Again, we talked about all of these in great length, a great length last time. Timetable, just for your information, and I'm going to pass it back to you, Madam Chair, to, to take us through the discussion this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Before we dive in, I'd like to say that in today's agenda, this is listed as an information discussion item, but I'm going to suggest that it be a proposed agenda item for the next meeting in the event that we are in a position to adopt at March twenty-first. If we are, that's great. If we're not, then of course, we've got the March twenty-eighth meeting. And, and then also, what I'd like to do is, is discuss these in the same order that Dr. Heron went through in terms of priorities not included, the non-negotiable, then the negotiable increases, and then I think move on to the discussion about some of the opportunities that we may have to realize some savings. So I'd like to take each of those kind of as a subset of this larger conversation, so we'll have several round robins, if that's okay, along these areas. But before we begin, I'd like to confirm the gap we're looking at between, we have some new information from the state, I believe, because a, a budget was adopted. So if we could just be clear-eyed about what that gap is based on what was budgeted by our largest local funder, that'd be great.
Ms. Berta is probably coming forward as we speak and may want to remain fairly close to the podium over the course of the discussion. We'll bring you up, Chair, Ms. Berta, thank you for, for helping us out this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. Based on the actions of the General Assembly as they closed their session out at the end of February, we are looking at an additional four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars from the state. The state did include the caveat that a school division would provide at least a two percent salary increase to SOQ-funded positions. However, that piece of that caveat does allow for a salary increase over the course of the biennium. Because of the work that we did on the salary scale last year, we already meet that requirement to accept the funding, so there is not a mandate that we have to do any kind of salary adjustment in this year in order to accept the funding. That's not our ultimate goal, but it is a piece to know that that funding is on the table and available to us regardless of what the choice is as far as the salary increase. That being said, with some communication and review of the county and city adopted budgets from last year as what is projected to be received this year, of course, that's not final until they take action on their own individual budgets, but looking forward at that, it would require us, based on the superintendent's proposal, along with the additional state funding, to reduce out of our budget one million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars in order to achieve a balanced budget based on the pieces of information we know.
So roughly one point four million dollars.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Could we go back to the slide of the priorities that we discussed at our budget retreat that was, that were not included in this budget? I just want to give everybody an opportunity to take a look at this and see if there's comfort around the table with the things that were left out.
I don't know that we're comfortable with it, but we, I mean, we understand.
Yeah, the reality. So this is, I'd like to note that this is a very tough budget year, and I think administration has indicated that probably the toughest year and, toughest budget in ten years, would you?
In a while, yeah.
Yeah, so. Snow removal, I'm not, I'm not suggesting migrating that into the budget, but I am, I do want to say publicly that if it snows, we have to wait till the sun comes out and melts the snow for people to go back to school.
It'll only snow on Saturday.
Friday night.
Friday night.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Sunday. All right, that's my birthday, snowing on my birthday. Okay, so thank you very much. Can we go to the non-negotiable? This is non-negotiable, so I guess there's not much to say about it, but maybe we can just soak it in for a second. Any questions or clarifications on this one? Okay. All right. So can we then go to the next, the list of negotiable items? So let's start with pathways, because we've already had that conversation. Where do we want to start?
Do you, the next slide?
Do you, do you happen to have this anywhere online? Okay. Can, does everybody have this?
It's in the green folder.
It's in the green folder? All right. Unfortunately, it's not on the screen, but the pathways items are number ten, technology for middle school and pathways. So I think we would be, based on our conversation last time, not including two hundred laptops in that line item, reducing it by two hundred.
Right, so that's not all pathways, that's some of that, some of that is for the middle school, completion of the middle school laptop program.
Right. So it would be removed?
I believe the majority of it.
It would be a hundred and six thousand dollars, a hundred and six thousand dollar removal.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So it would make it three hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Thank you.
If we remove what?
If we remove pathways from Jamestown and Lafayette.
And then the other pathways would be number seventeen, and that's the, can we?
It would adjust the instructional materials from the superintendent's proposed budget of seventy-five thousand to twenty-five thousand, and the transportation from sixty thousand to twenty thousand.
Okay.
Berta, did we find out from the state if we keep or have to return that fifty thousand? What do we find out?
I've had some preliminary conversations with the Virginia Department of Education, and because we have gone through the whole planning phase of the project, and we'll continue that work throughout the year to complete the courses for pathways at the other two schools, the actual physical curriculum and courses, we will, we will not have to return the money, because we've completed the planning phase.
Right.
With regard to the, the implementation grant that follows it, if we delay the implementation, we may not be eligible for that. However, we are having discussions about how to offer the integrated classes in both schools and pilot the actual courses that have been written without the full-blown pathways project. So we would actually, potentially could move forward with a part of it without the funding, and that would allow the teachers to implement what's been done, and also provide students with an opportunity for a different way of learning within both high schools. If we can make that happen, that's our best potential scenario, and if we do that, we may well be, Alice, go for the implementation grant.
So of the hundred and thirty-five, what would be the savings total? I'm sorry, I-
The new number would be a hundred, it would be forty-five thousand instead of a hundred and thirty-five thousand on line seventeen.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Madam Chair, I just have a point of clarification with regard to pathways, it's not on that sheet, but, so a budget item is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to increase teacher allocations by two teaching positions for pathways, comma, special education enrollment? How, how much of that is pathways? How much of that is special ed?
We have just allocated two positions within the current budget to utilize in those areas as, if necessary. So that is two staffing positions at seventy-five thousand apiece, because we budget salary and benefits to ensure that we have the funding available to support a hire. So it's, it's undecided at this point in time, as proposed in the superintendent's budget, but we would have to see how enrollment would come forward in the new school year to allocate those positions, should they stay in the budget.
So they're essentially reserved positions?
They are.
Okay, which we got rid of how many years ago?
I think the reason we included, we actually started with more of the budget and came down to two, is because our projected enrollment is only twenty-eight students, and it doesn't, that enrollment doesn't require new positions, but we are taking the low enrollment to be conservative in our budget, but we could end up with more students that we have to serve. Plus, our special ed numbers and ESL numbers are very much minimum expectations.
We're so close to SOQ now that-
But yes, they are reserved positions right now.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything on this list that they'd like to discuss?
Oh, I do have one.
Yes.
So with regard to the early, what number is it, the early college, the ninety thousand dollars? Ms. DePaola and I talked about, right now, there are caps, fifty students would have access to this program at War Hill and twenty-five and twenty-five respectively at Jamestown and Lafayette. My proposal to maximize some dollars would be to eliminate the cap, to fund this, but we would provide those monies for students who are in need, so we could serve more, more students could participate in that program. We could agree to fund up to twenty-five students who meet some criteria, free and reduced lunch, let's say, and we would fund up to six credits for those students. Does that make sense?
So restrict those funds for use only for free and reduced lunch.
Or however we determine students at need, yes, so that we could serve more students. There would not be a cap, so if you can, if you can pay, you can participate in that program. So it would not be limited to just twenty-five students at Lafayette and twenty-five students at Jamestown, but we could earmark those monies for students who have demonstrated some, some level of need. We would determine what that, what that criteria is.
Does that work from the Thomas Nelson perspective?
It's my understanding that it does, that they don't, there's, there's no limit on how many of our students they would-
I don't think there's some prerequisites for the program, it's having the staff to teach certain courses in the schools, which they're working on right now, for anyone to participate, there's foundational courses, but after that, if we had a flood of students, there may be limitations, but there are, there are, there are quite a few spaces available.
And likewise, we're suggesting ninety thousand dollars, and if we would put criteria on that for students who are in need, if, if, if we, if, instead of everyone, instead of twenty-five students being guaranteed that we will pay for six credits, who maybe don't need that, there could be some cost savings realized there. We, we really don't know how many students will participate and what their level of financial need is, but that gives us more flexibility to serve more students and really support the students who, who might not go. So right now, the proposal is ninety thousand dollars is earmarked to meet the needs of the Thomas Nelson Specialty Program, and the division has said that they will pay up to six credits for each student who participates in that program, regardless of need. Every student who chooses to participate, my, and, and so that's capped, that means only twenty-five students at Lafayette and Jamestown can participate in the program, because we only have limited dollars. My suggestion would be to not cap it. As many students who meet the criteria, because there's academic criteria, to participate in the program, having completed their various prereqs, anyone can participate once they've met that criteria, but the only ones who will get the funding are the ones who have demonstrated need. Does anyone else, does that, does, does everyone else follow that?
I, I under-
I follow.
Yeah, I, I follow it, but what would be the savings? Did, was there a figure that-
Well, well, the first thing is that more students could participate, that's the biggest thing. And then, right now, it's my understanding that no student at War Hill who's participated in this program has asked for funding. So my bet is that there might not be that many students who do ask for funding, but if they do, we've limited that to those twenty-five students at each of the schools. But we haven't limited the number of students who could participate in the program if they have the ability to pay. So we're targeting our dollars for students who are, have some level of need, that's the purpose of my way of thinking.
We're talking funding each of them?
Yes.
But what would, but what would be the potential savings?
We don't know how many, we don't know if all twenty-five, we don't know if there'll be twenty-five students.
Okay, let's say there are twenty-five students, and so what would we be paying for?
Well, our budgeted amount that's there right now.
It's ninety thousand. Is that for, that's, that's for twenty-five students?
That's for a hundred students, fifty at War Hill, twenty-five at Jamestown, and twenty-five at Lafayette. So right now, with this ninety thousand dollars, only a hundred kids can participate in that program.
Right.
So I think the, the, the potential, it's, it's not necessarily potential savings, but the way it's structured right now, that money's going to be spent no matter what-
Right.
-as opposed to letting anyone who could, wants to, who can afford to participate-
I, I understand that.
And then the money may not be used.
But I'm just trying to figure out what would be the cost for twenty-five students if twenty-five students that were in need requested funding?
We would only pay up to six credits, the way it's structured now.
Right.
I don't think-
I'm asking how much the six credits would cost.
So are you saying those without need would have to pay to take the courses?
Right.
Are you saying, how much is a course?
A hundred and fifty bucks a credit hour, something like that.
Six credit hours?
Six credits, six credits is a thousand dollars per Ms. DePaola.
Yeah. It's a thousand bucks. Okay. It's a lot of money.
So I, I think, Ms. Ombe, what you're suggesting is not changing the line item, but just the policy behind it.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, people.
But then you may have students who choose, not because they don't want to do it, but because their parents say, we can't, you know, we're just not coming up with a thousand bucks for that. So you're going to go through this.
We can probably discuss this at a later time, I'm just throwing it out there as a way to, to serve more students. So in terms of equity, War Hill's going to serve fifty students, Jamestown and Lafayette are going to serve twenty-five respectively. If we remove the cap, earmarking a certain amount of dollars, potentially more students can participate.
But at the end of the day, I, I think the, the idea is to, at this point, moving into our adopted budget is to preserve that money, and then I think the administration has heard us that there's an interest in figuring out if families are able to pay a way to, you know, build that into the system, but not shutting anybody out who, for whatever reason can't, so.
Ms. Cook, is there consensus of the board to keep the ninety thousand in the budget at this moment in time?
So, okay, I guess I'm, I'm, I want to just make sure I completely understand this. Before this program came along, students who wanted to take courses over Thomas Nelson, how was that funded? They paid for their own courses?
At one point in time, yes, I think we've promoted it as part of our early college program, and so we, we actually promoted the program last year and built the partnership, and we now have forty students involved. The number of students taking courses was very minimal, and so we, with our early college and students achieving their graduation requirements earlier, this was a way to start to begin their college career while still being a high school student, and that was the whole purpose of the program. Do we have to pay for it? No, but potentially, we may have less students participate in the program.
How many, okay, okay, before this money was, you know, is available, how many students do we have that are taking courses over there, paying a thousand dollars?
Not sure, Ms. DePaola, do you?
A lot.
We can certainly get you, data on that, Dr. Behrs, absolutely.
Yeah, I, you know, I, this is an affluent community, so I'm sure, you know, that, that possibility is there, but I just, I, I just want to make sure I completely understand how the funding works on that.
Okay, we'll get additional information for you on, on the numbers.
I'm looking at that, I'm wondering if that isn't something that the, the school foundation couldn't take on, and I'd like it removed almost completely, because, I mean, there's other opportunities for kids. I, as a parent, would have been glad to pay the thousand dollars, because it's a lot cheaper than what you're going to spend at a university. But we're, like you said, we're in a tough budget year, and so.
I, I, on this particular budget item, I, I would hate to freeze out essentially anyone who was eligible academically to participate but that whose family was on free and reduced lunch. So I, I mean, I, I, you know, so I'd like to keep that in there to provide that opportunity for students realizing that, you know, that it's, it's a, it's a fluid amount, and ninety thousand dollars may not be used, but I think that, again, so is that-
Was this not funded in previous years?
No, sir.
It wasn't funded, so this is, this is, yeah, okay. I, I, I agree with Mrs. Cook, I mean, this, there are segments of this, of this community that are very affluent, there are segments of this community that are not affluent, and I would like to have some avenue for some of, for, for those free and reduced students to, to have an opportunity to, to take advantage of this program. So I think that, I think it's important that we leave that money in there as much as possible.
Well, I think if we're going to, if we're going to have to make some hard cuts, then I think what Ms. Ombe has suggested is a great solution, because then you're still keeping, you're still keeping the twenty-five thousand dollars available for students on free and reduced lunches. because then you're still keeping, you're still keeping the twenty-five thousand dollars available for students on free and reduced lunches. But you're, you're actually losing a good portion of this, is, if, if I'm right in understanding that it's a thousand dollars per student for, for the, for the credits. Isn't that what Ms. Burtis said?
For paying up to six credits.
For paying up to six credits.
And, yeah, but it won't, if we keep in for up to twenty-five students to have that possibility at Lafayette and Jamestown and the forty in, in War Hill, because they are a year ahead in implementing the program. That's the only reason they're, they, they already know they will have many more interested students. It wouldn't end up as twenty-five, it still would end up as ninety thousand. So I think the question is, do you want to reduce the amount or keep it as a board?
Well, and, and let me ask for clarification on Mr. Kelly's question about has this been funded before? Not in the, not in the superintendent's budget, but, but the students at War Hill who have participated did receive financial support for that participation. Is that correct?
I think we got a grant from TNC for textbooks for them as well, and we did.
The number, a number of War Hill students have been included in the budget, if I'm correct, in prior years. Yeah, yes. It's just an increased number for War Hill. And then twenty-five for Lafayette and twenty-five for Jamestown are being added in this budget proposal.
So the War Hill students are, have become accustomed to how much support in terms of credit hours? Do we know?
They have received support, yes.
Yeah.
In, in the current year.
Okay. So this would be a change for those students if they do not qualify for free and reduced lunch?
That's correct.
I'm in favor of keeping the numbers the same at this point in time. That may change, but.
Number, you mean the figure?
The figure, yeah, that, yeah, the ninety thousand.
I, I would agree to keep the number in there, but I, I would like the administration to look into how that money is spent and, you know, put some real thought into what Mrs. Ombi is talking about. And, you know, how much do we, how much do our students utilize it today? What do we think, free and reduced lunch-wise, and just kind of put some more thought into implementation of that program? But as far as a budget item, I think, I think, I'm, I know that I'm comfortable in keeping that number in there. But I think Mrs. Ombi's proposal has some merit to it. One of the things that I, I think we should look at are the two replacement buses. We have a fleet of a hundred and fifty-five buses. We have eighteen buses that are used as spares. We bought eight last year with leftover money. I'm, I would like to think that we would, at the end of this year, we would have, potentially have some number left over and have that kind of be earmarked for more. I know that that's not guaranteed, but it's a tough budget year. It's two buses out of a hundred and fifty-five. And I just think that in, in today's climate, that we might want to think about looking at that and reducing that number. Mr. Snipes hasn't thrown anything at me yet, so I'm, I'm happy about that.
Hasn't kicked the back of my chair, so. Any thoughts on that?
I concur with, with Mr. Kelly on the buses. To a certain extent, I think we're kicking it down the curb. But if, if we have to, you know, rub pennies together, I'm sorry, Mr. Snipes.
You got additional buses above and beyond replacements this year, didn't you?
No, we replaced eight buses.
That's it, so we didn't get any?
We, we replaced eight buses in the year-end spending plan, knowing that we were going to have a difficult budget year and fiscal year eighteen with the VRS, VRS increase.
And the budget that we'll be discussing a year from now is going to have new buses in it, probably because of a new middle school opening.
Potentially.
Yeah, so.
That'll be in your capital plan, though.
Yes, thank you. So I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of anything that we left out. I'm not in favor of, of taking anything off the table. But I, I concur that it's probably a smart decision to go ahead and, and do that. I, I'd like to see a kind of an updated replacement, because I think we started with eight, and then we migrated to nine, and now we're to ten a year, is that right?
Yes, we are at ten a year.
Yeah, so will this migrate us to eleven a year with a new middle school coming online?
I'd have to evaluate that. I, I don't know that that would change unless we did something different next year with replacements.
Okay.
I think you'll probably be at ten.
Okay.
Yeah, on our, on our board docs, they, they, they said the original plan says twelve for next year. So this would, this would, this is, as Mrs. Ombi said, this isn't like kicking it down the curb. This is kicking it down the curb. So, you know, that we'd be looking at fourteen next year if possible, and that's going to be a pretty substantial number.
Can I, can you give me again, I know, I know we talked about this the last time, rationale, the need, the real need for the school improvement specialists at the middle schools, three middle schools? Is there a school, is there a school improvement specialist in those schools now?
No, sir, there's not.
So they don't have any?
They don't, they don't have the extra support. The high schools, all three high schools have a school improvement specialist who.
And tell me again, what's their primary responsibility?
They supervise the whole assessment testing program. They do the data analysis. They do some maybe low-level discipline within the school boundaries as well. So they've become like a, a quasi-assistant principal. They're the teacher leadership position, but they, they start to learn a lot of the school improvement process as a potential future administrator.
So it's not?
So they become an extra resource for the school, especially in our three middle schools, where we only have two APs for eight or nine hundred students. It's really to provide.
So this is something that couldn't be done outside the school?
Correct. Really, the only other option is to ask for an, an extra AP in each school. And that is always a first preference. This was another way to look at, at, at helping the schools.
Office in central office gathers all the data, tabulates, and puts it together, that sort of thing.
That would be Department of Accountability?
Yeah. Is that, do we not have the capability of pulling that stuff out of the schools and just?
We, we actually do a lot of the data analysis and provide access to the data, and we provide, we actually train the school improvement specialists. But they become the keepers of the data at the school level. And each school has a school improvement plan that's driven by that school's individual data. They have data points they monitor to show progress throughout the year. So it really becomes a very valuable person within the leadership team. And it really, it starts, it provides that resource to the principal and assistant principals, so they can be in the classrooms more as well.
And can you just, as a, remind us what is typical in other schools around us in terms of staffing and APs in other middle schools? And, yeah.
I believe Mr. Baker has some information about the number of assistant principals in, in schools that are similar to ours. Do you have that with you?
Presented from before, most of the neighboring school divisions in the middle schools have at least two APs, and most of them even have three APs, and ours only have one AP.
For Berkeley, which has.
And is one of those primarily responsible for the, the assessment data, the gathering of the data, collating and the analysis, that kind of thing?
Without an extra assistant principal, well, if there's no school improvement specialist, the assistant principal currently is doing all of that. So our one assistant.
How did we do all that before? Because we've had school improvement plans for years.
Well, I, I think we have, but our numbers of students are growing in the school.
I understand that.
So we have other discipline issues to deal with, with other support systems.
I'm just looking for places.
I understand, sir.
So, no.
It is a real, it is, it really is a true need.
I, I agree with the justification, no, it's just, I think it's important for people to hear that.
And if I could just add, Dr. Beers, I've, I've spent some time in assistant principals' offices. Really?
Personally or for your kids?
Want to say something more about that?
Particularly, it horns me, not for my kids, but, so those, the APs struggle. They wear so many hats. I mean, I was in there just to get some information and, and watched. The assistant principal was, was torn in multiple ways, from discipline and IEP meetings and testing. And they, they need another person to support them, if, what they need is an AP.
I was looking at the possibility of technology trying to squeeze some of that out.
We need another person.
Yeah, neither.
In a leadership capacity, and I think this is a, a, a more cost-effective way than hiring an AP.
It's a cost-effective. It's a career step for a teacher who's aspiring to administration. It has lots of ways that will, will help our, our school administrative teams at the middle school level.
I would say of this list, other than the salary increase for staff, which is my first priority, my second would be those three SISs. I think that, like Ms. Ombi, I've, yeah, seen some time in the middle school offices, and I would agree that it's a, it's a critical need, particularly when you benchmark us against others, so. So are we, and, do we have consensus on delaying the buses, taking that out of this operating budget?
Can I ask you a question? Are, are these ranked in any way?
No.
On here? That's, that's what I'm wondering.
No.
We haven't ranked the, the priority for these. I mean, I agree. Number one would be the salary increase for staff. To me, that's probably the most important thing on here, just because I, I think our teachers do deserve a raise. But to me, all the rest of this is negotiable, and I think we really need to be thinking about that, because, I mean, if we're going to make our choices, maybe we need to do some ranking of these.
Well, I think.
I mean, because we're just, we're just kind of looking at, just going, jumping around, and, I mean, maybe we're looking at the ones that are the highest cost items, but.
I think that, per the code, Dr. Heron has presented to us a budget of need.
Oh, I understand that.
So I think that trying to figure out what to remove for this budget, recognizing that there's a sizable, you know, roughly one point four million dollar gap between what, what, what we have in front of us and what we believe may be available to us, is, is sort of where we're going. I, so I'm not sure that, I, I'm certainly not interested in removing too much more of this, but, but the buses, I think there's consensus on. Is that?
Statute.
Correct, okay. So, Dr. Heron, I think what we've got so far, to, to kind of repeat, is to take the buses out to, on number ten, instead of four hundred and eighty, that's three hundred and seventy-four thousand because of the laptops. And then on number seventeen, that's forty-five thousand instead of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then on number sixteen, the budget, the ninety thousand stays in, but there's, there's, we've asked staff to consider student need as a factor there, so that the money doesn't automatically go away to the first person who signs up, regardless of need, so. I think, again, I think everybody said the salary staff, the salary increase for staff. You know, if we don't do that, we're just looking at double that next year, because then we're back into compression again. So given that we spent nearly two and a half million dollars last year to fix compression, I think it would be fairly silly and, you know, maybe dollar, penny wise, dollar foolish to do that. The increased staff members is reserved positions, I think, given how lean we are. I don't, I just don't think we have a choice on that.
Yeah, number nine?
Yes.
I mean, if you look at, if you look at staff of eleven hundred, I mean, two, you know, I just, I, I, if we're, and that's if needed, so I mean, if, if the numbers show up, we have to hire them anyway. So I don't know why we would keep the hundred and fifty in there personally.
So, but if they show up and it's not budgeted, the school division has to come back to us and ask for that money? Ask for a relocation, is that correct?
We would actually have to go to our funding partners after going to you to ask for money. The only caution I have in that is as much as we are utilizing an attrition savings that we have not done in prior years. Last year, we put a pretty, pretty hefty chunk of attrition savings, which this year I'm forecasting a pretty lean end-of-year balance based on that. So I would only caution you that knowing that the enrollment increase is expected to be twenty-eight, and knowing what we're seeing with our ELL population and our special ed population, my preference as the CFO would be to have somewhere to go, so I don't have to cut other department budgets to hire staff.
Especially because in those two particular populations, we're so close to SOQ. We're, you know, that we don't want to get out of compliance.
Yeah, I mean, and the other, the other thing to consider, too, is that it's our, our responsibility to put to our funding partners a budget of need. We're not, it's not our, our responsibility to hit a number. It's, you know.
Right.
We, we look at, we look at this, we put it, we deal with it through with a critical eye, and, and, but it's still our responsibility to put out a budget of need.
The VLP funding for a hundred thousand virtual learning, everybody, I mean, that's obviously the wave of the future. Deny, I think, denying that opportunity for our kids is probably not a good idea.
Well, at the end of the day, it saves us money by not having to have a teacher to necessarily, you know, teach those classes full-time. So I think that's, that's an investment and not an expense.
Yeah, white fleet replacement, as I understand it, towing costs more than the vehicle, so we need something to tow buses.
This is actually our vehicle that goes to tow our buses and our vehicles, and it has been breakdown prone recently, which is why then request was made in the budget process, so we don't have a vehicle breaking down to go pick up another broken down vehicle.
Okay. Number fifteen, allocation to school based on enrollment. All right.
I don't even know what that means. What does that mean?
We currently allocate a hundred and thirty-five dollars per elementary student, a hundred and sixty dollars per middle school student, and two hundred and thirty dollars per high school student to contribute instructional funds to a school budget, so they can use it as needed for their student population. So this is to reflect the additional twenty-eight projected students in the division.
My only hope is that we don't actually spend a hundred and fifty thousand, yeah.
How much did we spend last time?
Sixty-nine.
Are we redistricting? I thought that was strategic plan. We're talking about redistricting. I'm not sure what the cost was for redistricting.
Can you get that for us, please?
I can try to find it.
And with the understanding that we redistricted two levels last time.
Mm-hmm.
And that this, with the opening of a middle school, we're only required to do middle school.
Right. Although we have capacity issues at the high school level.
Yeah, and at the elementary school level.
Yeah.
We're only required to do middle school.
Correct.
We also do have some in, we do have some in-house expertise. If you can come back and.
Yeah.
Chat about that later, but hopefully that number will, would be significantly less, but we don't know.
Don't know.
We don't know, but maybe we can find out before we make a decision.
Strategic plan development, last time it was roughly seventy thousand. So this is a trimmed version, but we, you know, we, we need a strategic plan. I think that's an expectation of ours and of the communities. And then translation services, that's to translate the Code of Conduct and the Program of Studies.
This is really just a bare minimum. I mean, there are so many other documents that really need to be translated. This is really just a drop in the bucket and.
Right, and Google Translate doesn't.
To try to meet the needs of a grown population.
I almost, I almost think that should be in the top, the top list.
Yeah. Well, these aren't ranked, right?
They're not ranked.
Yeah, this is just.
I mean, I think it should be non-negotiable.
Oh.
In the top list.
Okay, okay.
As we see that our English language learners are increasing.
Okay. All right, so do we have, you have direction there? I'm looking on this list, okay. Any other questions on this list before we move on to the other areas? What I'd like to talk about next is, see if I can't find this. The last slide from the last presentation, I think it was, where it was options for balancing needs. Do you happen to have that handy? Okay. So the last slide, from the last presentation, there was a, it was called Options for Balancing Need and include prioritize and reduce negotiable budgetary items, which is an exercise we just went through, adjust health insurance benefits, increase class size, reduce instructional funding allocation, other options, question marks. So with that in mind, hoping that we could go through a conversation about some of those items in no particular order. Why don't we? Why don't we, yes, go ahead, Dr. Beers. Yes, sir.
I'd say, let's start with the toughest one.
I was headed to the easy one first.
No, I, I think we have to look at the health insurance cost containment. There's some real useful information in there that I was not aware of before and I am aware of now. And I find that helpful.
Okay. So...
I didn't know if that's what you were...
I was actually going to go to student-teacher ratios, because I was guessing that everybody would be in agreement on that.
Yes.
Don't touch student-teacher.
Don't touch.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. So let's just take that off the table. Sorry, Dr. Beers, I just want to go to the easy first.
It's the elephant in the room.
Yeah. There's Ms. Hunley with her gloves on.
I know, I know.
Okay, so now, go ahead, Dr. Beers, let us know what you think about health insurance.
I, well, I just think it's, I think it's something that we have to look at. I think the, the information about the cost impact of spouses is somewhat compelling. I don't know if we have to, that surcharge, it certainly doesn't have to be a surcharge. But I do think, merits discussion, you know, I'm just saying, I think we need to talk about that.
Okay.
And, yeah, I'm sorry, and Kristi, Ms. Berta and Dr. Heron, if you want to say something about that, I think it would be...
Yeah, for the public interest, because we've had the benefit of learning some information, could you just give us a quick overview of how we compare to other divisions in this issue of health benefits? And then, you know, some, if you could just start there.
I think we do have some slides, because we weren't sure what the board was wanting to be saving.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
So we've got a few that do bring up some...
Okay, yeah, could you walk us through these, please?
Sure. So when we take a look at Region Two, because the question was asked at the last board meeting, how do we compare related to employee benefits? And just for information purposes, employee benefits include FICA, Medicare, VRS, hang on a second, I'm trying to get to my sheet, for our division, tuition reimbursement, health insurance, and leave payouts. So when we look at that, the only things that are in control of the board as far as adjustment based on budgetary or policy decisions would be health insurance, tuition assistance, and sick leave payouts. So looking at how we compare to our Region Two counterparts, we are ranked second in expenditures in fiscal year 16 for employee benefits. So all of those things I just described, we spend 24.91% of our budget on employee benefits. Taking a look at how we compare to like divisions, because we work to compare ourselves to demographically similar school divisions across the state, we rank first in comparison to percentage of our expenditures, of our budget, on benefits. Taking it a step further, looking at health insurance specifically, and I just want to make the caveat that not all of our plans are like in comparing us, because we are part of the local choice. The only other school divisions in Region Two that are part of the local choice as well are Southampton and Franklin. So looking at how we compare, we do spend 11.95% of our budget on health insurance. We rank number one. Taking that a step further and looking at our like divisions, we are still ranked number one, and none of those like school divisions participate in the local choice. That is some overview information on benefits and health information and how we compare to other divisions.
Are there any questions about this before we move on to that?
Ms. Berta, I'm just curious, so the other divisions that don't participate in the local choice, do you know what they participate in?
They're all across the board. Some of them have HMOs, some of them are self-insured, some of them are fully insured. It's really difficult to compare health insurance benefits across divisions, because we're all so different in what we have as far as plan offerings.
I'd like to just say that in addition to being relatively, comparatively robust in the percentage of the, our budget that we spend, I think something that I would, as we start to discuss this topic and consider some cost containment opportunities, the quality of our insurance is very high. All three products are PPOs, and, which I would not ever walk away from, because PPOs are just superior products and allow consumer choice, which I think our employees deserve. So, so I think that's important to note, that not, that it's not just cost, it's also quality of product, and that's part of the mix. And I think that the quality of the product is probably the most important thing. So, do you want to talk a little bit about our plans? What are your next slides?
We're going to go out of order.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Baker to come up here.
Okay.
I'm going to pass this to Mr. Baker.
This is just a slide of what our, it was on one of the sheets you already received, but this is what the majority of our employees are. People are asking, you know, how much does, do we pay? How much does the employee pay? Just to kind of give you a feel for what this, what this looks like. And so you can even see the percentage, so this is most of our, where most of our employees fall, and how much we're paying as a school division per employee.
Majority are on the 500?
No, about, I think, the majority actually are participating in the highest plan, the two, the K250 plan, the more, as you described, the more robust plan, that our employees have made the choice. You can see where the school division pays $610 for the, say, for the employee-only option for K500 or K250, a significant portion of our employees about, have chosen to choose to buy up to the K250, that that's the plan that they desire. So we, we have that choice, and so it doesn't cost the school division anything extra if they choose that K250 plan.
Before we go into cost containment, can we talk about just the future of our, our cost, our investment? I guess I have two, two thoughts. First, the idea of containing costs out in the future, so this doesn't necessarily help us next year or even the year after, but the idea of grandfathering, you know, we've done that for some other benefits. So I was curious if there's an opportunity to, to offer, you know, that, that consumer-driven plan, that first plan to any new employees. So not necessarily touching anything that anyone's become accustomed to, but for new people coming in, is there an opportunity to drive choice down to the lower cost plan? And also, you know, the monthly cost, I see the same for 250 and 500, but different for the high deductible plan.
When we were designing it this past year, we couldn't get it, it was so less expensive, we couldn't even get it to, because you see, the total monthly premium for the high deductible health plan is only $502, plus we're giving $100 for the HSA to it, so we're already paying 610, so it was already below that number, you know, of what the employees pay, and you couldn't get it any lower.
But could that then put more money into the HSA?
Uh, we could.
Yeah.
I guess we designed it.
So that, you know, because at this point, there's no real incentive to go there, to go to the lower, because I'm getting more money from you if I'm at 250 or 500.
No, no, I mean, right now, the employees for the high deductible health plan, they're only paying $15 for employee-only out of pocket, plus we're giving them $100 per month, so $1,200 per year for that plan. I guess, but your question was, can...
Can the monthly cost from us be the same across all three plans?
I guess we could, yeah, it was just...
Does that further incent that consumer-driven?
Yeah, and I think your question about the, can you grandfather people in? Legally, we could make all new employees go just to the high deductible health plan and not give any options, any flexibility.
No, 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 that's not what I'm suggesting.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm suggesting that, that that's what's covered, and then anyone would have to buy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You could, yeah, then the, then potential increase to the, to the other plans would be significant, but you could.
I don't know, what does anyone think about that?
How important are benefits when you are out recruiting teachers?
It's less important than starting teacher pay. Most teachers want the money in their paycheck. It's important, but it's not, most of the teachers, when you're, they want to see what they're, what's in their actual paycheck.
It's in their actual paycheck, right? Okay.
But of course, a surcharge would reduce that paycheck. So it's a, yeah. I just was fooling around with some numbers here that, you know, that you guys put together, and I see a surcharge of maybe $40 a month.
Before we get to the surcharge, can we just talk about the plans and then... So, you know, because, I mean, I guess we could just not make those other plans available, if that's what you thought I was saying, but I, I think that, you know, the future of healthcare is towards the consumer-driven products. For younger people who may not use healthcare as much, it's an opportunity to augment their retirement savings. So it just seems like they could benefit from that and get a little bit more retirement savings, a little bit more money in their pocket, and save the division a little bit more money. Seems, seems like something that we should think about moving forward, and, you know, maybe not for this budget, maybe we don't have enough time to, to do it for this one, but I, I would like to get, I would like to start containing costs. I don't want to restrict what's available to people, but I want to hold tight on what we're paying for it. I don't know, does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Well, for this year, we have had no increases in our, in our health insurance costs. So, holding tight is zero, zero.
The renewal rate came back flat.
Right. So if we, if we reduce what we, what we pay and, and reduce the take-home pay for the teachers, that would yield us savings, but other than that, there's no real, you know, there's no real, there's no reason to adjust what we're taking, what we're paying for health insurance for our employees.
Well, unless we need to make, unless we need to realize some savings.
And pass it on to our teachers.
Yeah.
Right.
Correct.
Madam Chair, so, well, we do have to realize some savings, because we clearly didn't get very far with earlier negotiable items. And I concur with, with the Chair in that, for, this doesn't help us immediately, but for the future, if we could reduce the amount that the division pays from the 610 to maybe 487, certainly for new, for new hires, then they could certainly buy up, they would have the option to buy up, but there's, there's a, our cost containment is realized there, like this, this is the amount of money that we're going to put towards insurance for new hires.
But we could make our, our portion less, I mean, the percentage that we're paying. It's, we're paying a significant percentage.
Yeah, so maybe, yeah, so maybe mirror the, for new hires, mirror that. But I, I think at some point, we're, we have to grandfather what, what is offered. I think the quality of the product stays the same, but the, but the cost share has to shift for new, for new people. Mrs. Taylor, what do you think? Ms. Young?
I'm, I'm looking at this, and it seems to me when you are opting to take a higher plan, I'm just trying to understand this, the premium, the monthly cost. I mean, I, I guess I don't understand why we haven't, to date, already decided that we are willing to go with a high deductible health plan, and then having our teachers, if they want to elect more, have them pay for it.
Well, if you look at the numbers, the employees do. So if you look at the employee...
No, I do, I see that.
If you look at the employee monthly cost for a family at a high deductible, they can pay 105, or for the 250, they can pay 354.
Right.
So they, so employees do choose to pay up. So if they go to the 500, for a family, it's 201, or they can pay 354, the monthly cost to the school division is the same.
But I think what Mrs. Young is getting at is, is the amount of money that the division pays is, is...
Not the same.
Well, it's not the same, so there's an equity issue there in terms of benefits. But it's a significant portion that we, that we do pay, and I think what we struggle with is our, our wages are lower than our surrounding partners and to those communities that we compare ourselves to. So our wages are lower, our benefits are more robust, and we do pay a higher amount. So I would caution us to, as Ms. Cook has said, change, change what people are currently used to, but I think we do have to look at cost containment, we do. And so I think for the future, we, we need to look at what, as Ms. Young was saying, the amount of money that, that the division pays, because the amount of money that, that employees pay, while it does vary, significantly smaller than the amount of money that the division is paying for each of those products. And so, and in terms of equity, the, the young teachers who aren't married get less of a benefit. The division is, is only paying 610 for them versus for the teachers who have families, the division is paying 1,500 for them. So there's an equity issue among our teachers. But we have to find containment somewhere. We have to realize savings somewhere. We're 1.5 million shortfall.
And we're leading the pack on, on benefits, and overall pay, just not entering pay, right? So...
And I would never apologize for giving our teachers good benefits, good wages.
I'm not apologizing.
No, no, I think we're forced to find the containment, this isn't something that any of us want to do.
We're forced to put out a budget of need.
So, so is there consensus on the board about next, holding, for new hires next year, holding firm at the HSA level in terms of school division monthly cost?
I don't know why we have to make that decision tonight, because that doesn't, that doesn't give us budget for '17, '18, that gives, looks at budget for '18, '19. So I'm not sure what that would do.
It does? The lower saves us a couple hundred bucks on each new employee.
So what do you, what, I don't understand what you're saying, then.
So for all new, so this fee structure is grandfathered for existing employees, don't want to, you know, hold everybody harmless there, except for that for new hires, the monthly cost shifts to the HSA.
So we will only pay 457 for employee only?
487.
487 for whatever plan they take?
875 and 1250, yeah.
Yeah, we do the HSA for the high deductible health plan.
So it's 587, 975, and 1350?
Per month, yeah.
We're going to say $33 an employee for an employee only.
Baker, do we have a sense of how much the, I guess a premium is a premium? Do enrollees in our 250 or 500 plans drive up costs more than, I mean, a premium is a premium, I mean, the insurance companies are out there to make money, right? So it's not like the 250 plan or the 500 plan, people enrolled in those plans aren't driving costs up over the long haul, right? I mean, the whole pool is, right?
Right, and we're paying more for that, and it's, you know, so the, either the co-insurance and the deductibles are different, but you're paying for that.
The actuarial pool is our whole division as opposed to the 250 or the 500?
It's actually all of us with...
Okay.
Yeah.
So where people are on a plan doesn't matter in terms of costs?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right, so. Sorry.
We had a committee.
Yes.
Didn't we have a committee that studied this in depth?
Yes. And they recommended what you want to talk about.
So.
And they didn't bring up-
I'm not going to, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, I'm sorry. Go, go ahead.
Actually, they didn't bring up doing what you've just talked about.
Right, this thing right here, yeah.
They, they didn't, to get, the committee did lead to the introduction of a high deductible plan, which we didn't have two years ago. So we didn't even have that option. And the committee was part of the decision to introduce a high deductible option and a saving, the savings plan that goes with it.
Well, I know a lot of young people who work. That's one of the things they hopped out for, is a high deductible early, early on. Because they're healthy and they, so it's, it's, I don't know if you do, if you can have a graduated, you know, I don't know how you, how you can do that. I'm probably not. This, to me, talking about this, this is long-term.
Right.
This is not, we're not going to, but I think this really, and every district is going to have to really look closely at that stuff over the next five or 10 years. I think it's going to be really important. So I'm really reluctant to, you know, commit in, you know, any way with this. But I, I really think it's important. It is important to look at. It really is, isn't it? It may mean that we expand, we reduce the number, you know. I, I don't know how it's going to come down. Because nobody really knows what's going to come down right now anyway, and what impact it's going to have on all the other plans that are out there. So I'm just, you know, my, so I think that's really critical, that we have, that's, that has to be studied and looked at. Because those are, those are striking numbers. And, you know, and I know they're going to get striking, you know, they, they grow. Unless something else comes along and changes that. No, I was, I was, I was looking at more of probably a short-term. That might become long-term, a way of trying to at least limit the cost or reduce the cost. Come up with a number that could help us with our, you know, with our budget where we are now. And I was looking at the recommendations of that, of that committee. So that's kind of where I am.
And what they had brought for was the, the suggestion of the spousal surcharge?
Well, yeah. And, and there are lots of different ways of playing with that. And, and, because I think, well, I-
Before we move on, Dr. Riss, so just going, so I don't sense consensus on touching this. I, I hear sort of division on that. Is that, is that, okay. So we'll, we'll stay put on this for now? Is that?
Madam Chair, we can certainly bring you some information forward for your consideration during the course of, of the next few months and look at things in more detail and maybe bring some potential options to you for your consideration rather than making a decision on it tonight.
Right. Because I think the fact that we have a PPO is something we want to hold on to. But in and of itself, that's an unusual beast. It's, 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 it's really, I think, very special and don't want to lose that. But overall, the, the, the system is moving towards high deductible, consumer-driven healthcare for a variety of reasons. I, I think it puts, I, I think it benefits younger, newer teachers. And given the demographics of our population as a whole and that, you know, baby boomers are retiring and so forth, I think we're going to need to attract younger people by allowing them to have more money in their pocket and not have such a large portion of their compensation taken up by healthcare. And, but allowing that choice to buy up if they so choose. So I just think in the long term, as a division, both for cost containment, to attract younger employees for a variety of reasons, we're going to need to make that shift.
Well, we, I mean, when you look at insurance, you have to look at the whole package. So, I mean, you, you bring younger, younger teachers in, and then they have families. And then they need a health insurance. And if the, if the lower-cost plans require more money out of their pocket, you have reduced their income, their discretionary income. So it's, it's, it's not just the insurance premium is the cost of healthcare. For those, for some, for those plans, the cost that they have to pay out of pocket, if they, so if they need medical insurance, also impacts. So it's not, it's not like you can look at the premiums and, oh, premiums alone and look at, look at a teacher. And then if you look at the, the family environment of the teacher, as they, as they pay off their student loans and then they get, they, they start having families, then that's additional cost to the teacher.
A properly incented HSA plan can actually not only address that by having money in the bank to address the deductible in any given year, but also provide retirement savings over time. So it's, it's certainly doable, and there are good models out there.
Most of our, most of our teachers choose to have, what are, what are most of our teachers on?
The two-fifty.
The two-fifty.
I know what the HSA, one comment is, I think we could potentially, like, talking about the CFO is, is front-loaded-
Yeah.
The, the hundred dollars a month that we do now. Give it, and if some people get worried or anxiety about, hey, that's a big nut there. So they can go ahead and know they can get that twelve-hundred dollars upfront for the high deductible.
All right. So moving on, we'll just keep this as-is for now and work on it over, over the year. Now, Dr. Biers, spousal surcharge.
Well, there, I'm assuming that they, they have two, they have two suggestions there. One of them was to, you know, do an increase in the monthly premiums.
Yeah, can we?
This is just a slide to kind of give you some ideas of what a spousal surcharge could look.
I went even down lower. But that, that helped. Because I, I ended up with, let me see if we're in the same sort of-
Just kind of back of the envelope.
Yeah, we are, we are. I, I even went down to forty dollars a month. And like, I got, that, you know, I came, I came up with three-hundred thousand. Now, I might not be looking at the right number.
No, no. The way we got to here, just back of the envelope numbers, is there's, there's six-hundred and thirty-nine spouses covered. So six-hundred and thirty-nine times two-hundred dollars a month, times 12 months is roughly-
Oh, I see.
The 1.5 million dollars. That's it. Everybody stayed. No changes were made. For budgeting purposes, I think we felt more comfortable actually budgeting half of that.
So can you give us some benchmarking on what other divisions are doing or other organ, localities are doing? Arena, please.
Sure. The, most other school divisions even around us, they're, they are making a distinction with spouses. So Chesapeake charges about forty-eight dollars difference in their plans for spouses. Gloucester charges actually closer to two-hundred and eighty dollars a month difference for spouses. Hampton City charges a little over two-hundred dollars difference for spouses.
Monthly?
Monthly.
These are surcharges?
No, they actually have different tiers in their structure. And break, they have a spouse, just that, a tier for just spouses that way. But, but the difference between, for their tiers of employee plus one or employee plus spouse, that's the difference. So that, that's how much difference it is. Newport News is about two, two-hundred and five dollars a month difference. And York County's a hundred-and-eighty-two dollars a month difference. So it's not out of line. It's, it's pretty typical in terms of spouses just cost more actuarially to, to cover.
Well, no, you could, you know, you could, you can go below a hundred and you still, you're still going to get some savings if you add them up with all the other things that we're trying to do now. But sure, a hundred's a nice, you know, I, I don't think everybody's going to be happy with that, but.
But you don't really get savings, you get revenue. You don't get savings, you get revenue.
I'm sorry, Jim.
You don't get savings, you get revenue.
I get both.
Why you get both?
If you, if someone leaves, because?
If a family of four, the spouse leaves, the division saves nothing.
Well, that's not true. Because then you're not, that's one fewer insured.
If, if they're on family coverage and if you had three children and a, and a spouse, if that spouse left elsewhere, we're not going to get the revenue as you described.
Not get the revenue, but you won't get the savings either.
Actuarially, years from now, you may.
Actuarially, years from now, you may. Okay.
It's, but for your budget purposes.
Right. But otherwise, if the spouse stays, you, the division sees no savings, but gets revenue of twelve-hundred bucks and discretionary income for the teacher goes down by twelve-hundred bucks a year. Right?
Correct.
So, so if the employee has family coverage, that does not include the spouse?
Oh, it does include the spouse.
That's what I thought.
But if you covered the spouse in, in your family coverage, there potentially could be a surcharge of whatever you wanted, a hundred dollars, a hundred-and-fifty dollars, forty dollars. You could do a surcharge.
So then the family would have to decide whether if the spouse goes off, if they have the coverage available, they could go to that, which also serves to reduce the discretionary income of the family, or go to the, to the market or pay the hundred bucks. Or two-hundred bucks.
You said that, I remember at the other school divisions, we're all going to do something similar to this.
They have a distinction for spouses. Correct.
It's probably not possible. If it were possible to find out, would, you know, how many stayed, how many left? Do you have any friends down there that, just to get a sense of, you know, we're, I don't think we're going to, I don't think there's going to be a rush.
I think most-
Believe, but I, I just think that if we can come up with as, as painless a figure as we can, because I think two-hundred's a lot, you know, and whoever-
A month, yeah.
Yeah. And I'd like, you know, try to get something down below a hundred. But I think we're going to have to do something like that. We can't be, it's like, the cost keeps going up. And the premiums didn't go up. But, but we're, it's, it's junk.
Another potential idea with this too, to help drive people to the consumer-driven health plan is that, and we wouldn't do the spousal surcharge for anybody who chose the high deductible health plan.
I, I think that's really important because then it doesn't harm people who are at the lower end of our pay scale. You know, people who are not instructional staff, but who rely on our benefits. I don't want to, I don't want to do that. But, but I think that when I look at the, the comparison to how we are, how we compare to the region two and to our peers, I, I think that we have to put forth a budget of need. But I think that budget of need is hard to justify in the realm of benefits and health insurance when we're at the top of the pack, no matter which lens you look through. And I think that we have to go with a responsible budget. And I think that there's, there's room to realize some, some cost containment here. And I think that no matter how hard it is, I think we have to grapple with the fact that our salary system, although we made a great adjustment last year to fix it, has some issues as it pertains to both benefits and, and, and pay. And, and so I think that because it is possible that spouses have options to go, to go elsewhere to get their insurance, I think that this is probably the cleanest way to, to start, particularly because we're at the, the top of the heap here, whereas we're not, not the top of the heap in, in entry salary and that sort of thing. So I would, I would be in favor of, I, I think forty dollars is an interesting idea, but I'm not sure how much it would move the needle on, on this, on these charts that have been provided for us. So I would, I would favor a, a higher monthly spousal surcharge. Mrs. Young, what do you think?
With that, a higher, I, I don't even think a hundred dollars is out of line.
I concur with, with what you've said. I don't think forty's going to move the needle enough.
I don't like the idea of two-hundred dollars or a hundred-and-fifty, but the hundred, that would save us, would offset, using the word up there, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that's quite a bit.
What do you think about zero for the HSA, a hundred for the five-hundred, and then two-hundred for the two-fifty?
I don't know. I'd have to think about that.
One more time?
Zero for the HSA, the high deductible, sorry. A hundred for the five-hundred plan, and then two-hundred for the two-fifty.
So they're already paying, so a family's already paying a hundred-and-fifty more, and so you'd make that three-hundred-and-fifty more for the, from the five-hundred to the two-fifty.
Can you go back to that slide?
Actually, so instead of paying three-fifty-four, you want them to pay five-fifty-four for the family on the two-fifty plan?
Or they could choose to go down to the higher deductible.
Right. But those, but those, but, you know, for a family that has medical, medical expenses, you're, you're, I mean, that's, that's why they're going there, because they get better coverage. So, so, so now you're going to make them pay more for medical, medical insurance.
Let me be clear. The Virginia Department, Board of Education, a couple months ago, did a beautiful job saying that the state is shorting public education by six-hundred million dollars. If you divide that by a hundred-and-thirty-two, we should be getting four-and-a-half million dollars extra from the state. Sadly, that's not happening. The state, as you say, you know, the problem is in Richmond, not in Mounts Bay.
Right.
And it's certainly not here on Ironbound. So, but I think we have fiscal realities in front of us that we have to address that aren't going to go away. So, so I would say that our state delegation is, is, is putting us in a position where that's the reality that we have to face. And that's what I recommend.
Okay. Well, you know where I am.
I do.
I do not support a surcharge.
Of any kind.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't support anything that's going to take money out of our families' pockets for our teachers.
But if we present a budget of need with a gap of a million and a half and our funding partners say we can't meet that gap, it's going to, we're going to have to cut somewhere.
We're not at a million and a half, we're a little over, a little under a million now with the cuts that we've already made. So we have made sacrifices to, from the budget that the superintendent proposed as, as her budget of need.
Which had sacrifices in it.
Which has made sacrifices. So we have made sacrifices. So for us to try to get to a number is not a budget of need. It's not a budget that's, that serves the school division. It's not a budget that serves our teachers. And potentially not a budget that serves our community. So, so that's where I am.
And I'm not, you know, I don't think, I'm, I'm certainly not coming here to get to a number. In fact, I'd put the buses back in, because I think that's a need. I'm looking at a chart that tells me that we're at the top of the heap and that we probably need to be serious about cost containment because we've shifted compensation, like a lot of businesses have and organizations have, towards benefits at a time when benefits were cheaper and, and salary raises weren't to be had. But now benefits are not cheap and we, I think, have to start fixing that. And it's painful, but that's, that's my thinking. It's not a number.
It's also, we've made a deal with our teachers years ago that we would not, they would not get market rate for their services, but we would make sure that they had good benefits and a good retirement package. And so now we make them contribute to their retirement package. And we've not raised their salaries. And now we're going to make them contribute to their health insurance, and we have not raised their salaries. So, so as the way I look at it, we are breaking a covenant with the profession. Now, it's not just a WJCC problem. I get it. I just don't want to contribute to that. So that's where I am, in support of our teachers.
Dr. Biers?
I do support. I do think that, that I, I agree with Mr. Kelly, that we may have had a covenant many, many years ago, but things aren't the same anymore. And other young families in other fields are feeling the very same kind of thing that I know our teachers are. And so I would hope that we could come up with a figure that is, that would still give us a significant savings, but is more palatable than, than I think what some of the other school divisions are, are doing. And their salary scales aren't any that much higher than ours, if at all, and they're, and, and they're doing that. So that's, that's where I am. And I, I think it is, it, it's, you know, it, to me, it's like trying to come up with a, with a plan that's, doesn't affect their salary, but it may affect how much they get to take home. I understand that. But many things affect what they get to take home, and so I'm, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm certainly sympathetic, I, you know, I, I don't think our teachers are paid enough. You know, that's, that's sort of historically all across the country. So I, having been married to one for many, many years and been a teacher myself, I certainly can, can appreciate what it's like. But I, but I also think that we've gotta try to work within our means, even if we're not gonna come to complete agreement with the, our governing bodies, and we may end up at some point, okay, we'll do this if you do that. I mean, that's sort of, I, I don't know how much give there is over there, so I, but I do think this is the least painful thing to try to deal with in terms of, and you're right, we used to not have to contribute anything to VRS, and then we had to start contributing a little, and then we had to start contributing more. And VRS, in its infinite wisdom, loaned out millions and millions and millions of dollars for construction companies, all kinds of, their return rates were horrible for years when rates everywhere else were outstanding. But, you know, this is a conservative state, and they, they made that decision, and they're gonna continue to make those kinds of decisions. And so I, no, Jim, I, I totally, I completely agree. Sometimes I wish we could lop off South, sorry if anybody's from Southwest Virginia, but that's really where the power of the state lives, is in Southwest Virginia. And, and we can't budge them, if they're, it's hard to budge. So I, that's about all I have to say.
I think on this topic, we need to give the administration some direction, so...
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Try a couple of other numbers, and, and, you know, I know there's been talk about people are looking at the hundred dollar figure, try fifty, just see, you know, just sort of...
Go back, you could just take half of it.
And how much would that save us?
Well, if everybody stayed on the plan and nobody left...
Seventy-five.
Yeah, so a hundred is seven hundred and fifty thousand, but we'd only be budgeting three hundred and seventy-five thousand, so half of that.
Does everybody agree no surcharge for that high deductible? Does everybody? Jim, I know you agree with that.
I know, I agree totally with that. So when the, when you say high deductible, how much is the deductible?
The deductible and the high deductible plan is, for an individual is twenty-eight hundred dollars, and for a family is fifty-six hundred dollars.
Actually low.
How much for a family?
Fifty-six hundred.
Fifty-six hundred. So, so if I just do the math here, so employee costs of two hundred and, two hundred and one, is that a, is that a ten-month, twelve-month cost?
Twelve months.
Twelve-month cost, so, so if I'm at the five hundred and I do two hundred a month, that's, that's twenty-four hundred, right? And so now I'm gonna add a, a surcharge of, what's the number we're looking at? Well, I'm in the, I'm in the five hundred, the five hundred comprehensive.
Anybody keep a track of what our savings hours are going along? I got up to a hundred and, four hundred and forty-three thousand.
Yeah, we're down to about a million. Down to about a million. We're down to about a million now.
Yeah, okay.
So, so let's say, let's say I had, I do a surcharge of a hundred, so that's twelve hundred, right? And so I add that up, again, that's thirty-six hundred dollars for a family of, for families for healthcare. Now, this healthcare also includes our teacher assistance, right?
For all our employees.
So our teacher assistance, who's making twelve thousand dollars a year, fourteen thousand?
Bus drivers or our cafeteria.
Right, that's for every employee.
Okay. And we're gonna charge them twelve hundred bucks additional for a spouse.
Okay.
Or they can pay fifty-six hundred dollars, or half their annual income, for, for a deductible.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't either.
What, what don't, what don't you agree with?
With that characterization, because you're talking about, you're assuming that that spouse doesn't have another option.
And you're assuming that they do?
No, I'm not.
I mean, but that's, either way, we're gonna reduce that, they're gonna have to go get insurance if they, if they say they work, say they don't work.
These figures are off for full-time employees. Can, can we see some figures for the ones who work twenty-plus hours?
These are for everybody that has our coverage.
Is it there?
Yeah. We have, like I said, we have six hundred and thirty-nine employees who cover their spouse.
Okay.
So it's, it's almost half of our employees, a little bit less.
What do you say, Ms. Ombi?
Oh, all right, I got you. I see.
It's not easy. I'm in favor of a surcharge. My experience has been the nonprofit world, and in the nonprofit world, generally the employee is covered at a hundred percent, and, and families are not covered, and the employee is expected to cover that at a hundred percent. So I think we certainly don't wanna go there, but I think to Mr. Dr. Beers's point, that, that there are families in other professions that are struggling. It is the cost of health insurance. The fact that we do cover entire families, most of the entire cost of the premium is, is a benefit I don't want to eradicate, but I think we do have to look at cost containment as we go down the road, and, and it is unpredictable, we don't know what's gonna happen, we don't know what's gonna happen at the federal level, we don't know if cost is gonna go up. It'll be interesting to see next year. I'm in favor of a surcharge.
Do you have a sense of what, what level you're comfortable with?
I concur with your proposal, zero, one hundred, and two hundred.
Don't ask me.
Yeah?
I, I, I think that's too high. I, I, I think zero for the lower, definitely, but I don't know about the top two, because we're drastically increasing. If you make that top, top tier, two hundred and fifty, if you add an additional two hundred dollars on there, I don't know, I think that's a lot of money.
Well, it's sort of like, you know, it's, it's, if you go the lowest and the highest salaries, and divide them into, I don't know, four or five different levels, and then you have a, and you come up with a number that changes farther up you get, it's sort of like, I know it's just a terrible example, there are like four levels of parking fees over at the college, and they're all based on your salary. So the ones with the highest salary pay the highest parking fee, and the ones with the lower salary pay the lowest.
That's true.
Now, that's not a perfect analogy, but I, I don't know if there's a way, 'cause I, you know, I wanna make sure, 'cause I completely agree with everything that's been said about, the, the folks at the lower end need as much help as they can possibly get. So I've, I would, and I know the ones at the, the highest needed to, but not quite as much as the one at the, ones at the lowest. So I, I think the dollar figure might be a better way to go with this, instead of, you know, teacher aid, bus driver, you know, just use, use the numbers, use the dollars, use the salaries as a way of sort of pro-rate, try to figure that out.
Dr. Beers, we'd probably have to get a, a legal opinion.
Sorry.
We may have to get a legal opinion in, in charging different groups of employees for the same level of insurance, so that may be an obstacle to that, to that thought process.
Apparently, it's not an obstacle to the college.
For parking.
For parking.
Although, as a retiree, I do only pay eight dollars a year, so it saves a lot of money. But, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, so we have, we have two options. We could, you know, sleep on this and bring it up at the next meeting, but then we certainly would be adopting the budget on the twenty-eighth, or we could throw out a figure for the, you come to consensus on, on an amount for the administration to plug in, and then still sleep on that and see if we need to adjust it. I'm sure we will receive feedback after this conversation, and that will inform our thinking.
I just have another caveat, I was thinking about that. It actually is related, I know it's not gonna sound like it, but I saw an awful lot of comments on the calendar, teachers wanting two full weeks at Christmas. Why don't we give them two full weeks at Christmas, as we're trying to deal with this as well? I mean, they're, they're, there are different ways of, you know, and everybody's not gonna be happy, and, and it just...
And if you give them two full weeks at Christmas, you take away a Wednesday before Thanksgiving, get other people that aren't happy either.
Or, yeah. Graduation.
No, you don't want two weeks, okay?
There is no, there is no happy.
Okay, okay, forget the calendar.
An eighty-five out of eleven, eleven, eleven hundred.
I know, it takes so long to get there, you're right.
Ms. Taylor, do you have any thoughts?
Well, having been in education for a while, I think one hundred and two hundred are too high. It wouldn't be acceptable to me as an educator. It was unacceptable to me when my husband's work said, you have to go get your own insurance, and half my paycheck was gone. So if we were going to do that, I would like it to be a much smaller figure.
Do you, what is the thought about two, two surcharges, one for the two fifty and one for the five hundred? Does everybody who thinks a surcharge is a good idea thinks that that is a...
Small thing.
Just two different ones?
Yes, 'cause that gives people choice, too, they could, they have some choice.
So if not, if not one hundred, two hundred, what about seventy-five, one fifty?
It's too high.
What do you think?
We're not talking about people that are making millions of dollars here. We're, I mean, even at the highest level on, on the salary scale, that's a significant change in take-home pay.
My thinking is, is... Do other, do other divisions have different surcharges?
I'm not that aware of.
So I, I, just to see what it looks like, see where we're at.
Dr. Beers, we would not recommend a surcharge on the high deductible plan, because we want to give an option for employees that can't afford it, and so we do want to make sure there's a, a strong health option that's still available to employees if we, so if we're thinking the same amount, if that's your suggestion, I'd be concerned about the high deductible.
No, I, I really almost, yeah, no, I, I agree with that. Have a higher surcharge than if you don't choose that.
I think the high deductible should not have a surcharge.
So I think the majority of the board agrees that there should be a surcharge. There's some, been some dollar figures thrown about, but there's not consensus on that. Could someone suggest one that they can live with, so that the administration can, can do their work? What's driving my thinking is just that, that benchmarking, and, and over the long haul, I think being able to work with the taxpayers in our localities, and being able to, to talk about responsible budgeting is sort of what's driving my thinking. But if someone could just, and I, you know, so therefore, I'd like to do something that moves the needle on that, but, but I, I understand the, the, you know, the other, the other ideas, and again, wish more than anything that the state were writing us a four and a half million dollar check so that we could actually grow the division and meet our students' needs, but we're not in that position. So with that, Mrs. Young, or Mrs. Taylor, would you suggest an amount that we can give direction, or Dr. Beers? Suggest an amount so we can give direction to the...
Dr. Beers recommended forty dollars, I recommend fifty, just fifty for both.
I, I can do that, I don't have a problem with that.
So for budgetary purposes, that gets at it.
But where, where, where do you start that, so that, you know, individuals who are at a lower level, wouldn't have to pay it, or would pay a much longer amount? What are you gonna...
It's, it's zero for the HSA, or fifty for either other plan?
Yes.
So you don't wanna do fifty and a hundred?
No.
No. Dr. Aaron, what do you, what you're thinking about that?
I know this is extremely challenging, I think the market is, and what other systems are doing is a, a business benchmark for us, but I, I'm very cognizant that we're concerned about our employees, and we want, we don't want them to, to be less well-off while trying to make a hard decision. But certainly, I would agree totally with the fact we don't have a surcharge to the high deductible plan.
Remind us of the benchmarks again, please.
Sure. Some of our neighboring school divisions that make a distinction for spouses, Chesapeake has a distinction of about forty-eight dollars per month, Gloucester is actually two hundred and seventy-nine dollars per month, Hampton City's two hundred and nine dollars per month, Newport News is two hundred and five dollars per month, New York County's a hundred and eighty-two dollars per month, in terms of the distinction.
That's for all employees that are covered by the insurance?
Correct, yeah. The Newport News is two hundred and five dollars difference. Gloucester's two hundred and seventy-nine dollars different.
So I think the administration has its direction, fifty dollar a month surcharge for, for spouses. Is that right? All right.
Thank you. So what number does that get us to? What's our, what are we gonna use as a budget number?
We can't budget on half of that, you need to look to the right-hand side of the column, because we don't know if people will leave or stay.
A hundred and eighty-seven, five.
F of three seventy-five.
Yeah.
I think there's more likely that staff will... I think there's more likely that staff will stay on our plan because we're not adding a two hundred dollar surcharge. So the numbers, we maybe feel slightly better than, than what's up there, but there's no guarantee for the money.
Yeah, because I think in the final analysis, to leave the plan, to go to another plan, it's going to cost them a lot more than fifty dollars, so.
But at the end of the day, I believe one of these documents talked about how spouses drive cost.
I know.
And so that's something that I think we need to consider as we try to balance our budget year after year. So are there any other discussions about the budget before we move on? That moves us to item nine point zero one, revised policy EB, school crisis and emergency management plan. Dr. Herron, or Mrs. Taylor?
Mr. Snipes is here to provide a summary and answer any questions that you have regarding this revision.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members. Dr. Herron, a couple of, last week, we met with the Policy Committee to discuss revisions and retiring of certain policies. The first policy tonight we're bringing to you is to revise policy EB, which is a school crisis and emergency, emergency management plan. I also like to reiterate that we are, on many of these policies, we are aligning our current practices with those policies. For example, revising policy EB, we are removing and replacing the last sentence in the third paragraph. That sentence just, which we're removing states at least one simulated lockdown and crisis emergency evacuation activity should be conducted early in the school year. That is being removed because we currently, under state code, have to perform two lockdown drills each school year. And one needs to be conducted within the first twenty days of the school year. So we have insta-, we have implanted that information into the policy EB. The next thing we're adding is that we want to make sure that we are doing yearly tornado and earthquake drills should be conducted at all WJCC facilities. We are currently doing that anyway. We want to make sure that we continue that. And speaking of that, on March 21st, I think the tornado drill is taking place.
So, so the state code says two lockdown drills in the first twenty days?
At least two lockdown drills should be conducted within the first twenty days of the school year.
So with this, with this policy and the General Assembly sometimes changing their mind, should we, should the policy state we should conduct lockdown drills in accordance with state code versus saying what the numbers are from a, from a policy, then they implement the policy and however, how, in accordance with state code versus having numbers in there? Because I mean, you say yearly tornado and earthquake drills should be conducted. I mean, I, I just, if, if they say next year that they want to have three or they want to have one, then we have to come back and revise policy. Should we, shouldn't we just say we should do lockdown drills in accordance with state code? In the policy document?
Right. So, and seeing that this was last adopted in ten, it seems like maybe that's something that could go back through the attorneys to make sure that that's okay because it may be that we have to quantify a number in policy for some reason. And then we can bring it back again in April. Does that sound okay, you know? I mean, does everybody want to do that in accordance to state code or do we want to?
I think it's, that's a good idea. The only other thing I have on here is I noticed on the V S B A policy, it talks about school safety audits. Is, is that addressed in some other policy? Where schools are required to keep records of? Do they have regular audits of their safety? I mean, I guess Dr. Herron could answer that. I don't know.
We do, we do perform annual audits of our schools through our CTEP, which is a crime through experimental exponential design. So there is, there is a annual audit that's done by Mr. Weaver every year. And the schools perform a safety crisis management audit every year.
Mrs. Young's question, is it required by policy?
Is it required by policy? No, it's not required through the state law that we have to do it.
Okay, I'm just asking because V S B A talks about school safety audits.
Did you say it was required by state law to do that?
To my knowledge, it is not required by state law.
Is it something that we maybe should think about?
Maybe we'll look into it so that next time we bring this back to you, we can have those questions answered and make sure that we can, we can, we can make it part of our policy, of your policy, if you like.
Something more for the vice principals. But I'm, I'm asking because I think school safety is probably one of our primary responsibilities and would really like to make sure that schools are kept in a safe place. And I'm not saying they're not. I'm just saying if it's in policy, then it's something that.
I know in our practice, Mrs. Young, we do walkthroughs of the building with the building managers and assistant principal or principal every single year, and they look at all aspects of the building to, and if there's any safety concerns, the principal automatically will report that to operations to have it fixed. In our drills, it's all, they're all highly orchestrated now. We have the input of our local services and they give feedback on all of our drills. So they're all done to perfection. And if they're not done well, we actually redo them and give feedback. So we really have a very systematic way to approach the safety of our schools because it is one of our major concerns.
And, and our, the policy does address it. The second sentence in the first paragraph does state that each school will annually conduct school safety audits. So our, our policy EB does state that, that we will do that.
So it does?
Yes, yes. But this, I don't know if the state requires it, but our policy does state that.
So it's already in the policy?
So in terms of Mr. Kelly's recommendation, can we, let us, go back through policy? You know, can, bring this back again to the first meeting in April, just making sure that that's okay with legal?
Or illegal?
Any other questions about nine point zero one? Nine point zero two, retire policy E C B, buildings and grounds maintenance and replace with policy E C, building and grounds management and maintenance.
Yeah, the, we wanted to make sure we align this policy also with some V S B A policy E C. We removed this, the comment, the statement that principals were responsible for the condition and the safety of the schools and grounds. Operations is responsible for those, the safety of the school grounds. However, we did, we kept in the fact that the principal or the designee will report all problems which require attention to the operations department. So we, we added in the word designee there rather than just having parent. In addition, the change from the superintendent will maintain a preventative maintenance program. It just says the school division will maintain a preventative maintenance program. So those are the changes that occurred from one policy to the next.
Questions? Next is nine point zero three, retire policy E F A, food purchasing.
Yeah, this policy, we wanted to retire because policy D J of purchasing already states in that the superintendent or his or her designee acts as the WJCC purchasing agent and is authorized to execute all contracts for goods and services for the school board. So it's already mentioned in policy D J that superintendent will, is able, or the designee is responsible for those. So there's no need in having two policies that state the same thing.
Basically, the language of the policy is not needed because it's all incorporated in a current policy under purchasing.
Any questions? So nine point zero four, revised policy E F B, free and reduced price food services.
We wanted to make sure again that this aligned with the V S B A policy E F B. We removed the reference to the free milk program. The free milk program is already included in our school breakfast program and our national school lunch program. So that was the, the main thing there. We also removed a lot of the language that was in E F B because this language is very specific to the school lunch program, which we, we, which has already been adopted in the V S B A policy, which states that the Williamsburg James City County School Division provides free and reduced price breakfast and lunches to students according to the terms of the school breakfast program and the national school lunch program. Many of the items that were listed in the previous were already included in the school, national school lunch program.
Questions? Okay. Moving on to nine point zero five, retire policy E F E, food service record and reports with, and replace with policy E F, food service management.
Again, we are aligning our policies with the V S B A policy. The verbiage that is covered in the U S D agreement, USDA agreement and the National School Lunch Program agreement is, will be included. We did not need to be as specific in our previous policy that we are, that we were.
Any questions? And then finally, revise and rename policy I J, school guidance and counseling programs to school counseling programs. Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Thank you for, thank you for staying, Ms. Parker.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members and Dr. Herron. Our policy and title recommendations include update to language to align with the standards for school counseling programs in Virginia public schools, as well as state code, as well as video standards of quality and updates in professional terminology and best practices in school counseling. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Parker? Nope?
And she's glad she stayed here for this.
Thank you, Ms. Haley, for being here as well. Okay. That moves to ten point zero one, personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
So are the policies going to be on the next, at the next meeting for approval?
They will be on the consent agenda except for the first one, nine point zero one, which will go back through because of your excellent suggestion.
Well, thank you. The one, the one, one addition to my excellence is that a minimum state code versus two state code? If I can addend my excellent suggestion.
Personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Mrs. Chair, I am, I rec, I make a motion that we approve the personal, personnel actions as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Serza, will you call the roll, please? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Personnel actions have been approved. Okay, next is board members' comments. Dr. Beers?
A couple of things. I very much enjoyed, I was able to get to one school, Matthew Whaley, for the celebration of reading across the United States. And thoroughly enjoyed my, my visit with one of the classrooms there. I must say, having two very grown, for the most part, children who started out at Matthew Whaley decades ago, I could not resist the temptation to just step inside that auditorium, nobody was in there, and just breathe it all in because I, I, I remember what it was like to go to events there. And, and also Wendy Lucy, the reading specialist over there, who invited, invited me out. I was, this, educating E L students is something that I have a real passion for, I'm really concerned about. And I was very pleased to hear what the, what the division is doing and that PSYOP is, is an integral part of what's going on there. And I, I very much applaud that. I also realize that, as with any budget, it's, and especially now it's a difficult time to deal with our, to deal with the budget, to deal with shortfalls and trying to figure out the best way to have our dollars go as far as they possibly can towards the education of our students. I'm very much aware that really the glue that holds the whole division together and really demonstrates what kind of progress our students make or our teachers. And we're, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. And I appreciate the concerns that teachers have. And we will try, I will try to take in the consideration as, as much of that as I possibly can as we, as we arrive at, at our budget. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Onby?
I too was pleased to be able to participate in the Read Across America at Stonehouse and Matthew Whaley and received some excellent cards, written letters from each of the students that I read to at, at Stonehouse in Ms. Rodley's class, and they were very lovely cards. And I appreciate the students taking the time to do that. Today had an opportunity to present to the J B Blatons Ladies Fifth Grade Lunch Bunch Crew. So it's a group of fifth grade young ladies who every few weeks have speakers come in and, and share with them information about their position in the community and their job. And each of those ladies had really inquisitive questions to ask about the work of the school board and, and my role. And so I really enjoyed that group and wanted to thank Ms. Demasi from J B Blatton, who invited me to participate. Just wanted to share with the community, again, as we work to bring a budget of need to our funding partners. This is, it is very difficult. And for me, I wanted to make sure that we are able to move forward with a raise for our teachers, that we are able to, to, to keep our classroom sizes where they're at and not increase those. Those were very important to me. I struggle with health insurance. I think as a nation, we, we struggle there. But I encourage each and every community member to speak to their elected officials at the local, state and national level and echo the fact that, that Richmond has, has certainly failed us. And, you know, funding levels at the two hundred, two thousand and eight level are unacceptable. And if we are able to, if we're going to be able to meet the needs of 21st century learning and to do some innovative kinds of things and to meet the needs of all students with, with varying, very, varying levels of, of learning ability differences, children who are economically disadvantaged, ELL students, students with disabilities, we need funding to do that. So the community, as well as the school board, needs to advocate for those. And so I encourage everyone to, to echo that our schools are something that we need to invest in. They are not a liability. And we are trying to rub together two nickels to meet the needs as best we can. And I'm not happy with the discussion of health insurance on the table, but, but I do think trying to honor our fiduciary responsibility is, is where we're at, while also meeting the needs of, of, of teachers and staff and, and students. But we need help from the community as well to educate our legislators and policymakers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Kelly?
I, I could not unfortunately participate in Read Across America Day. I think this is probably one of the few days since I've been on the Read Across America Days. I haven't participated in since I've been on the board. I got caught up with an event at, at my work, so I couldn't, couldn't break away for that. But I always enjoy Stonehouse and their, and their, the parade that they have, the character parade and Thing One and Thing Two and all that. As we've gone through the winter, I've, I've enjoyed seeing the accomplishments of our winter sports teams and how well they have done. We have, I think we have one more winter sports team still playing on Friday in the state championship and I plan on being there, as a matter of fact. Spring musical season is starting. Jamestown IATA is twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. I highly recommend our spring musicals. They are, they are exceptional. And I have not been disappointed in any of the ones that I've gone to. I've said enough tonight about the budget. I have been cutting budgets on this board since I came here in 2010. I am sick of it. We cannot offer innovative programs. We cannot offer the, the education that our children deserve. We cannot offer the, the education that our children deserve and the education this community deserves without teachers and without the contributions that our teachers make. For the past however many years, you want to fill in the blank, we have put more and more and more demands on our teachers. We ask more of them. They have to work longer hours to meet the demands that we as a society place on them. I don't think it is, it is ethically correct as a society for us to look at trying to balance our budget on their backs. If we have to cut educational programs, if we have to provide an education that the Commonwealth thinks that we can afford, then that's what we're going to have to do. But we cannot provide a quality education without our teachers, so it might be a little bit of a difficult position for me because of the position I'm in, but I am not doing this, I'm doing this because I am concerned about the teaching profession. I'm concerned about those who want to go into the teaching profession. Looking at what we're doing to teachers is just not correct. So that's all.
Mrs. Young?
I concur with everything that Mr. Kelly just said about our teachers. Having been a teacher myself, I understand that every year, more and more is expected, and they're not compensated adequately, and it would be lovely to give them a really nice big raise. Instead, we're not able to do that this year. I am grateful to the legislature for not accepting the governor's proposal of using the bonus for our teachers because I think that affects a lot of different things and that, so I'm glad that they, whatever the minimal, minimal amount they gave for the budget for a raise, at least that was better than nothing. But I am glad that they did not choose to do the bonus for our teachers. That, that's very unfair. On a more positive note, I do want to thank the teachers for everything they do. I was fortunate to, to go to Matthew Whaley and Read Across America and saw Dr. Bear's car there and just had a great time with the students. I'm just unhappy that I was not able to read Bartholomew Coven's and the 500 Hats. That really, that was a big concern of mine. But I had a great time with the kids. They were adorable and, and wonderfully well behaved, and I want to thank Mrs. Alice for allowing me to, to be in her classroom. Reading is probably the number one thing, it's a gift to our students when they learn to read, and I promote that wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
I'm really sad I had to miss Read Across America due to some work commitments. That was unfortunate, and it sounds like everyone who went had a blast, so I'm really sad I had to miss that. But I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to speak for the public hearing and citizens' comments. I know we're in a very challenging time right now as we look further at the budget, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to have more feedback, particularly from our teachers as we move forward.
Yeah, I wanted to say a few words about the budget, too, and just to say that my priorities were protecting class size and providing a raise to staff, however meager, because I'd like to triple it, frankly. But this is a painful budget, and, and so are, we have the, the, the job to decide where that pain goes, and, and that's not an easy decision, but I, I have to look at the data and use data to inform my thinking about it, and, and that's what I have done, which is why I, why I have recommended or promoted what I have to, to try to, to send to something to the localities that we can justify with data. And I think that, as I said, the state is not living up to its responsibility, its constitutional mandate to fund education appropriately, but I think if we're going to talk about not cutting, then I think we need to be able to talk about revenue. And I think if we're not talking about revenue, then we have to be willing to cut. And so I just wanted to say that. I too participated in Read Across America, and, and it was blast. I was at Matthew Whaley. Unfortunately, I had a work commitment that prevented me from getting out to Stonehouse, but it was fun to read to Mrs. Johnson's second grade class. And also, I wanted to thank a local business who did a very generous, nice thing tonight to support the school board. Baker's Crust provided dinner for us tonight, and that was a really lovely thing to do. It was a very good dinner, so anyway. Are there any other board member comments? Okay. With that, we'll move up to 12.01, Upcoming Events. On March 9th, Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting at 6:30 PM in the James City County Recreation Center. The Policy Committee, the Policy Committee is meeting next on March 15th at 4:00 here in the Annex in room 309. And the Career and Technical Education Committee, is that, is that right? Is it 21st? Is that what it's called? No, sorry. It's meeting on the 28th of March at 4:00 PM in room 108 here at the School Board Central Office. I also wanted to note that at the end of this month, we will, the several members of the school board will be traveling to the National School Board Association Annual Conference in Denver.
One other meeting that is enlisted, the Student Advisory Committee?
Okay.
Is meeting tomorrow at War Hill at 3:00.
Thank you.
And that, what was, one got messed up because of the snow date, so it kind of got off, off track.
Thank you, thank you. We try to capture all of them, but every now and then, don't do that. So, and then in 12.02, upcoming meetings, we have a joint meeting with city council and the Board of Supervisors on March 17th in room 300 here at the Annex. We have a closed session on March 21st at 6:00 PM in city council chambers, or city council work room in the Stryker Center, followed by a regular meeting also on the 21st of March at 6:30 in city council chambers. We have a special meeting called on the 28th of March to adopt the budget if needed, if we're not able to do that on the 21st. And then on the 11th of April, we go into closed session at 6:00 here in the Annex, and then followed by, on the 11th at 6:30 in room 300 here in the Annex, is would be our April work session, so. Item 13.01, Agenda Items are set for the next regular meeting. We have the school calendar for next year. We've got the budget for further discussion and perhaps adoption. And then, of course, regular payroll, and, and then in the consent agenda, we've got all the policies minus one, and I think we have the month of the military child resolution next month. Is that right? Does that sound right? Yeah, I think so. So I think that's it, and with that, I'll adjourn the medium.